Hi everyone, it's Kelly Beatty coming to you live from the Senior Center here in North Chelmsford. For the Spring Session of the Annual Town Meeting. Now, for those of you who have followed this before, you know that Spring Session equals Budget. And Budget is tonight going to be front and center. For those of you who are just joining us for the first time in a few, because I know you're probably interested in the vote on the fire station, that will be Article 10. There are 33 articles on the warrant. There won't be 33 discussed tonight for sure. Five of them have been withdrawn for no action, so we're down to 28. The Budget will be fairly early in the discussion, but Article 10 is the one you want to keep an eye out for. That's the one that calls for special funding within the Budget, within the existing cap, for the renovation and for the rebuilding of a new center fire station adjacent to the Town Hall. Now, there's been a lot of activity here around the Senior Center. There've been vote no on Article 10 proponents out in front. My sense is that since the Town Meeting reps here have the mandate from the April vote in favor of this, that it could be a fairly straightforward discussion. And whether we get to that tonight, in fact, will be an issue. I wouldn't be surprised to see Article 10 held over until Thursday night. In any case, my sense is that the Town Meeting reps have heard it all before. It's been what we call a pre-Town Meeting where the Town Manager goes over all the articles beforehand. The Selectmen have voted 5-0 in favor of this article. And in fact, the vote in April returned incumbents to the Board of Selectmen. I think you're going to see a fairly unified front here tonight. Here's Dick DeFratis, Town Moderator.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And now, we would like the reps, all the reps, because you're newly elected for this year, to stand up, and the Town Manager will now swear you in. Sorry, Town Clerk. He's got enough to do.
Good evening. Could you kindly raise your right hands, please? After I say "I," you will be repeating your names, and you will be repeating after me. I, and state your name, do solemnly swear and affirm
Solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially
Faithfully and impartially.
discharge and perform
Discharge and perform.
all the duties incumbent upon me
All the duties incumbent upon me.
as a Town Meeting representative
As a Town Meeting representative.
according to the bylaws and charter
According to the bylaws and charter.
of the Town of Chelmsford
Of the Town of Chelmsford.
the laws of the Commonwealth
Laws of the Commonwealth.
and the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
Help God.
You are duly sworn. Congratulations to you all.
Okay, before we start, I'd like to point out where the fire exits are. There's one to my right, one to my left, up front, and about 50 feet back, one to my right, one to my left, and the main one in the back. Before I make some remarks, I'd like to introduce the Town officials. Town Council John Giorgio. Town Clerk Honorena Maloney. Town Accountant Darlene Lucier. Town Treasurer John Souza. The School Superintendent Frank Tiano. The Chairman of the School Committee, who will introduce the rest of the committee, Janet Askenberg.
The fellow members of the School Committee are Evelyn Thorin, Secretary. Nick DeSilvio. Mike Rigney, who has not joined us yet, and also, and also Al Thomas, who cannot join us this evening, but our thoughts and prayers are with him for a full recovery. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, John Curlin, who will introduce the rest of the board.
Thank you. To my far left is George Dixon. Jim Lane. Our Clerk Pat Wojcze. Our Vice Chair Matt Hanson.
And now, I'd like to introduce the Chairman of the Finance Committee, Mary Franz, who after she introduces, the Finance Committee has a pleasant task to perform.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce our members, and we have a few new people since we last met. At the far end is Sheila Pichet. Sasha Bonaktar, and I think I'm pronouncing his name right now. Our Vice Chair Roy Tribble. Tim McElvena. And Stratus Dicakis. Our seventh member is Patrice Garvin, and Patrice, in her work life, is Assistant to the Town Manager in Groton, and has to be there tonight for their Town Meeting. So she will be with us on Thursday night. It's my pleasure tonight, as you know, the Finance Committee is your advisor. We are your financial advisor. We are appointed by the Town Moderator, and our role is to be advisors to Town Meetings. So it seems this is the appropriate place tonight to honor a longtime member of the Committee who retired in January. And that is, if Dwight would stand up, Mr. Dwight Hayward, who was a member for 28 years. And I have here a plaque to honor Dwight in a moment, who was a member beginning in 1983. And in researching this, I went through old Town Warrant books and looked at letters and names, and I realized, as I put down the names, that he has served with 46 different people in the course of those 28 years. Seven of whom went on to become members of the Board of Selectmen, another five or so who were either school committees before or after, and many of whom were Town Meeting reps, some of whom are in this room tonight as Town Meeting reps. So we miss his being there. We regret Dwight's always being a member of the Committee, and we're sorry to see him leave, but very appreciative of the 28 years of service. And we thank you, Dwight. Before I move down to give this to Dwight, Mr. John Curlin has a proclamation from the Legislature to read.
Thank you, Mary. Having served with you, Dwight, for eight years, it's been a privilege, and I am honored to read this proclamation. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives, be it hereby known to all that, the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Dwight M. Hayward in recognition of your many years of dedicated service to the Town of Chelmsford as a member of the Finance Committee for 28 years and as an elected Town Meeting Representative for 22 years. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given this 30th day of April 2012 at the State House, Boston, Massachusetts, by Robert A. DeLeo, Speaker of the House, offered by State Representative James Arcero.
Ted Luda, who is the Information Technology Specialist, and he will be coordinating our electronic voting. Ted? And now, I'd like to make a few remarks. But first, are you all set, Ted? Not yet. I'll make my remarks, and then we'll go. I want to welcome everybody here. It's great to be standing here in front of you tonight. I'm not sure that I'll be the last one standing at the end of this meeting. This may be a tough meeting, and I ask for your full cooperation in keeping it civil and respectful. As a side note, I asked the White House for Secret Service protection tonight, but they said that the Town Meeting goes beyond the Secret Service's new curfew, even if we are meeting in a non-X-rated Senior Center. I want to thank all of you that attended my moderator seminar. You should now have a better understanding of my motivation and quest for fairness and efficiency. And I want to thank all of you that attended the Town Manager's pre-Town Meeting. You should be better prepared to deliberate and vote. There are some controversial issues in the warrant tonight. In order to guarantee fairness, this meeting will be run by the book. No question, all questions and debate will go through the moderator. There will be no side conversations with the presenter. No one is to be addressed by their name. You must address officials by their title. Mr. Manager, Madam Clerk, Mr. Moderator, Mr. Counsel, et cetera. No one is to cross-examine the presenter during a question and answer period. Questions like "Why didn't you?" imply guilt. Those will not be allowed. Questions are to seek factual information only during question and answer. And only reps can ask questions during question and answer. Reps can ask two questions, then they have to re-cue to the end of the line, and I may allow a follow-up if I feel that the answer wasn't forthcoming. Posturing is not allowed during question and answer. Tonight, we will have two microphones. The one on your right will be for all the people that are in favor of an article. The one on your left will be for those that are opposed to the article. I will alternate between right and left microphones. You can ask any question that you weren't able to ask during question and answer period from either microphone. And any rep can move the question from either microphone at any time. I will not cut off debate. I had that experience last year, and it didn't work. Debate will last as long as you want it to. I have made it easier for you to move the question by using two microphones. If there's an empty microphone, and there's 10 people left on the other line, you can go right to the empty microphone and move the question. So debate will last as long as you want it to last. Pending legislation, or litigation, rather, will not be discussed. Intentional slander will not be tolerated. Now, a word about amendments. Any rep can make an amendment. They must be in writing, and they must be reviewed by Town Council. And the amendment cannot change the nature or character of the article. Each amendment can be amended one time, and we will vote the amendments in reverse order. And a motion to amend can come from either microphone. A point of order, information, or personal privilege can interrupt a speaker. You rise to a point, but you must come to one of the microphones to make your point. I hope everybody adheres to this. I look to a productive and respectful Town Meeting. Now, Ted, can I do the quorum? Not yet? Okay, let me introduce the visitors that we have. And I need permission on some of these, because some of them are going to speak. Tonight, we have the Town Moderator from the Town of Bullricka, Gil Marrera, and his wife Susan. Can you stand, Gil? Now, I need permission from the following people so that they can speak. Gene Savoy, Business Manager from the Shoba Valley Technical High School. Jennifer Rhodes, Chair of the Expansion Planning Committee from the Shoba Valley Technical High School. Kathleen McWilliams, Business Manager and Presenter of, for the school system here in Chelmsford. Anne Marie Fiore, Director of Technology, is available for questions. And Kristin Rodriguez, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, will also be available for questions. So I ask for your permission to have them speak. All in favor, please raise your ticket. Opposed? Okay, I will do the quorum check before we get to a voting article, but right now, we're going to Article 1, which is received Town Committee reports. No vote is required on this.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the Town hear reports of the Town Officers and Committees.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As has been the custom at the beginning of Town Meetings in the fall and in the spring, I take an opportunity before we get into the substance of the first article to basically welcome new officials to the community and also to say farewell to those who should be their final Town Meeting as a Town Official. And this evening, in terms of the welcoming part, is I'd like to welcome Dr. Kristin Rodriguez, the Assistant Superintendent of Schools for the Chelmsford Public Schools. If she could just rise here, the center of the room here. And then, in terms of departures, we're losing two Town Officials on the general government side of the Town. The first one is Diana Ryder, the Director of the Council on Aging, who many of you frequent often inside this building. After almost six years with the community, Diana will be retiring on June 1st. So if Diana could please just rise and be recognized. And then, our last retirement that I'm aware of at this point is from our Public Works Director slash Town Engineer, Jim Pearson. Jim has been with the Town since it almost began, right, Jim? Twenty years. So if Jim could stand with us. Jim will be retiring at the end of the fiscal year on June 30th. The Moderator has also asked me to briefly report under this article the actions of previous Town Meetings. I'm pleased to report, as has been notified to me from the Town Clerk Honorena Maloney, that all of the actions taken at the Fall 2011 Town Meeting in terms of zoning and general bylaws have been approved by the Attorney General and are now in effect. And also, the special acts of this body, which was approved a year ago at the Spring Annual Town Meeting in 2011 pertaining to the recall amendments to the Town Charter, were signed into law by the Legislature almost two weeks ago, and it's known as Chapter 73 of the Acts of 2012. And so that's now in effect, effective as of the date of the signature by the Governor. And then also, the other one that was, is actually about 18 months ago, there was a brief amendment, for those of you who may have been here, about deleting the word "nine" from the number of precincts, which was sort of a technical correction that, for whatever reason, when they did the Charter review, they missed the restraint on the word "nine." That was signed into the law by the Legislature. So at this point, the only action that's remaining before the Legislature from this body is the one pertaining to the Fall 2011 vote regarding the authorization to lease Sunny Meadow Farm, also known as the Lewis Property, for a period up to 20 years. We're hopeful and expect that that may be enacted before the end of this legislative session in July. And then the other act that was approved by this board almost a year, over a year ago, which pertained to the, it was a year and a half ago, pertaining to the Special Home Rule petition regarding health insurance, that basically is now obsolete as a result of the Municipal Health Insurance Reform Act that was signed by the Governor back in August. So that's where things stand. And at this point, I would now like to move into the substance of the article. We're going to hear four reports this evening, and as listed, one will be by Pat Maloney, Chair of the Permanent Building Committee. The second will be by Dave McLaughlin, the Chairman of the Master Plan Implementation Steering Committee. That will be followed by Sue Carter, who's chairing the Oak Hill Study Committee. And then finally, Jim Pearson will be giving a final report on the sewer construction project. So with that, I'd like to turn this over to Pat Maloney, who's the Chair of the Town's Permanent Building Committee.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Patrick Maloney, Co-Chairman of the Permanent Building Committee. I'm going to do a very, very quick update this evening on some of the projects in Town. We'll update you quickly on the Town Halls project, the high school window replacement, volume school roof, and the DPW. Starting with the Town Halls, both projects are on schedule, on budget. We're at this point scheduled for substantial completion on June 1st for both projects, final completion for July 1st for both projects. Everything's tracking pretty well, and if you've been out and about looking at the buildings lately, they're looking great. So we're on track for scheduled completion and on budget. Couple more shots, the Senate Town Hall. You can see the addition is finally painted and the big beautiful flag behind the building. Picture of the North Town Hall, which anybody that was in North Town Hall in the past 15 or 20 years was wood studs for a long time. So closing in on wrapping that up, and the new siding going on the outside of the building with the windows, and you can see how this building's going to come back and give us some great use for many years to come. Okay. We were working on a MSBA project called Green Repair Program, and we were fortunate enough to get 50% reimbursement from Mass School Building Authority. We worked on two projects. One was replacing all the windows and doors at the high school, which we weren't fortunate enough to do when we did the $31 million project years back. And we also put a new roof on Byham. So the high school window replacement, the original appropriation was $1.8 million. Committed at this point, and we're wrapped up. We just have a final couple of crossing Ts and dotting Is to wrap that project up. Cost committed $1.689 million, with a remainder of $110,348 from that project. The volume school roof replacement, the original appropriation was $500,000. After bidding and some small changes, we came in at $390,000, and remaining is $109,000. We've applied for reimbursement on both projects, received reimbursement for the first round, and quite honestly, I didn't have time to go chase all the figures for that, but I know that we're expecting a second round of reimbursement from Mass School Building Authority shortly on those projects. So that was a win-win for the Town with the State paying half of those bills. Couple of quick pictures. The high school curtain wall systems were all replaced. All of the doors, windows, completely throughout the building were replaced, providing a much more secure environment. By the way, not, just mention that highly energy-efficient envelope at this point, so we were able to do some real good things there. DPW, if anybody's been down at Nine Alpha Road lately, you've probably seen an amazing amount of progress, and we were very fortunate with a good winter, very little snow, so we moved right along. Just a quick look at the Budget. We'll talk more about this in Article 12, and I'll get much more in-depth about the whole Budget, so we'll just give you a quick peek. We have some funds remaining from the original rounds of funding, so, but we will talk about this later. I'll leave it at that. Couple of pictures. This is from a few months ago, and you can actually see a lot of the structures that go in, a lot of the drainage systems and other systems as regulated by local boards and EPA and so on, so you can see a lot of that work going in. And just the last week or so, we've been putting in curbing and paving and readying the building. The new roof is going on as we speak. They started that project last week, so in good shape down there, moving right along. And we're hopeful to get a little bit more funding to complete the build-out, and that would get them in in about a year. That's pretty much it for the updates, and we'll see you later.
Well, I guess the order's a little different. I'm Sue Carter, Chairman of the Oak Hill Study Committee. Can you have the next slide? Oh, I got it here, sorry. I'm not used to this. This is the makeup of our committee. I'm the Chairman. Paul Gleason is our Vice Chairman. He was appointed as a Citizen at Large. Beth Logan, I mistakenly put her as the Secretary. She's taking our minutes. She and Fran McDougall are taking care of all of our secretarial duties. Beth is from the Conservation Commission. George Merrill was appointed as a Representative from the Historic Commission. John Edward from the Affordable Housing Committee. John Abbott, John Fielding, Fran McDougall, and Phil Stanley, all Citizens at Large. This is what our committee was tasked to do. I'm not going to read it all, but basically, we were tasked to find the best possible uses of the Oak Hill site with concentration on housing, open space, active and passive recreation, and historic preservation. Here's the site outlined in red. I think we all remember this from last Falls Town Meeting. Just to give you a rundown of the process we've been following, we were appointed in December, and we have met biweekly ever since then. Our first meeting was in January. We had a site walk in January before we started the process, so we were all very familiar with the site. We then had a SWOT analysis identifying the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats to the site, as well as pulling together a list of potential uses for the site. We have been working on Evaluation Criteria Matrix, where we can evaluate all of the potential uses objectively. We also have been going through a series of stakeholder meetings. We're trying to collect all the information we can before any decisions are made. So we've met with the Board of Health regarding the landfill, Town Manager, Director of Public Facilities regarding potential municipal uses and needs in the future, Town Engineer about general engineering and access issues, Lowell Sportsman's Club to find out what their issues and concerns were, Police and Fire Chiefs, public safety issues. Last week, we met with the abutters. We had a lot of abutters show up. It was a very productive meeting. Coming up in the month of May, our meetings will be taking up with representatives for potential uses. We've reached out We've reached out to the community to get people to come in and advocate for different uses so that we can have a question-and-answer period to try to get a better idea of the different uses and their ramifications. Where we're going from here, we will have a public input session. No date has been set as of yet. We figure this summer, we'll be working on the analysis and recommendations and preparing the final report during the summer, and then the final report to fall meeting in the Key points that we would like everyone to know is, as of now, we have no expenditures of funds to date. We've been doing our own clerical tasks. We don't even have a recording secretary that's done by members. We are still considering all uses. I think some of us maybe individually think some uses may be more feasible than others, but we have made no decisions for recommendations until we have met with all the stakeholders. And no uses have been ruled out, and we're going to be using the stakeholder interviews, and we'll apply a evaluation matrix. Our goal is to, in the final report, be able to say that we've looked at every potential use, and if it's ruled out, to be able to give a reason why, so that 20 years from now, town meeting's not going, "Oh, we only had that for Oak Hill." We'll have that, we want to be as thorough as possible and as open-minded as possible. So, that's a brief summary. All our meetings are open to the public, and we would invite any town meeting reps or anyone from the public to come and sit in on any of our meetings. Thank you.
I'd now like to ask Dave McLaughlin, the Chairman of the Master Plan Implementation Steering Committee, to give a brief report on the work regarding the master plan that was completed in 2010, and we're now in the midst, obviously, of our second year of implementation of the project.
Thank you, Paul. My report is far less interesting than the previous two reports, and unfortunately, or maybe fortunately, you all may have to listen to me for the next eight years, because this is a 10-year master plan. The Master Plan Implementation Committee was formed by the Planning Board at the completion of the 2010 master plan to monitor the progress and the implementation and recommendations of both the master plan and the open space and recreation master plan. There are nine members on our committee. Bob Joyce and George Zaire Rulis from the Planning Board, Pat Wojcicki from the Board of Selectmen, Paul Haverty from the Board of Appeals, Bob Morse from the Community Preservation Committee, Daniel Evans from the Town Meeting Representatives, Peter Robeson, a citizen-at-large, and Paul Cohen, the Town Manager, and myself as a representative of the Conservation Commission. These master plans were developed to provide the town with guidance and direction over the next 10 years in the areas of land use and zoning, economic development, transportation, housing, natural, cultural, and historical resources, municipal facilities and services, and open space and recreation. They are recommendations that boards and committees hopefully will see fit to implement. The recommendations in the plans were based on significant public input and discussion. The committee recognizes that the recommendations are just that, and that facts, circumstances, and politics at any time over the next 10 years may influence what gets done. The master plan has 155 recommendations to be worked on over that time period by eight boards and committees. 50% are assigned to the Town Manager and 21% to the Planning Board. The Board of Selectmen, Community Development, Conservation Commission, Community Preservation, Historical Commission, and Zoning Board of Appeals have the remainder. To date, 14% of those assignments have been completed, 49% are in process, and 37% have yet to be started. The Open Space and Recreation Plan has 65 recommendations for the next 10 years. 30% are assigned to the Conservation Commission and the remainder to the Town Manager, Community Preservation, and 10 other organizations. To date, 11% are completed, 40% are in process, and 49% have not yet been started. We're one full year into the master plans, and the committee believes that reasonable progress has been made. Thank you.
In our final report pertains to the sewer construction project. Many of you may recall that a year ago at this time, Barry Baylen, who is the Chair of the Board of Sewer Commissioners, gave a final report and calls out, and the Board of Sewer Commissioners dissolved last June 30th. The task of basically the runout of the project after they hit substantial completion was left to Jim Pearson, our Public Works Director and Town Engineer, and so we've asked Jim to give a final report, because at the end of this fiscal year, the town accountant will basically close the books on the sewer project. And the good news is, we're not coming back for any more money. So, I'd like to give Jim to give the final report.
Thanks, Paul. Just a little recap of the sewer construction project. The project dates, date back to 1980, when this town signed a consent decree with the state to look into and then hence build a sewer system. Construction activities took place between 1986 and 2011. Flow started to law in 1989. Just some project facts. We have over 11,800 connections. There's about 420 or so left, 500 individual grinder pumps, over 200 miles of pipe in the grounds, a million feet of pipe, gravity pipe in the ground. And that does include the roughly 600,000 feet of pipe connecting the street sewers to the residences and businesses. There were 41 municipal pump stations, each equipped with emergency generators for backup electrical power, which were tested extensively at the Halloween storm. 37 of the 41 pump stations were without electrical power for three days, and everything ran fine. We have 85 pumps in those 41 pump stations. We also operate four meter stations to measure our flow. Speaking of flow, we currently spend, send 2.5 million gallons of wastewater to Lowell each day for treatment. The cost of the project was $165 million, less $20 million in grants. Of that, $145 million. $72 million were accessed with low-interest or zero-interest loans. There currently remains $162,000 in the account, less about $3,200 per grinder pump for those that connect between now and June 30th. The books, as Paul said, the books will be closed out on June 30th, the end of the fiscal year. A few acknowledgements. I'd like to acknowledge our engineering firm, Western Sampson, who was with us from the start in 1980, especially Franian Skavitz, who started here as a young project engineer and working on our projects and still remains with the company as Vice President. The DPW crews, while the streets were being excavated and before being paved, installed over $1 million in drainage improvements in those streets, take advantage of the timing and obviously the town that funded those improvements. And without naming all the names, the finance committees, the Board Selectmen, the managers through the years for their support and involvement. And now, I will name names because it's the final report. I'd like to thank the Industrial Sewer Commission, Joe Ma, Ray Carey, Steve Lyons, Ed Marchant, and Anthony Tamboni, and the Chelmsford Sewer Commission, this is 1980 and beyond. That's really when the action happened. Dennis Reddy, Tom Moran, Jeff Prem, Gene Horgan, Bob Joyce, George Abely, George Dixon, Bill Dalton, Jeff Miller, Rich Day, Jack Susan, Barry Baylen, and the late, great Jack Emerson. Finally, I'd like to acknowledge the residents, because during this 28-year period, you put up with the noise, the dust, the unpaved surfaces, the traffic detours. It really, at times, was a pain in the neck. But above all, you funded the project. So, in summary, the project is complete, and by charter, the Sewer Commission's dissolved. The books will be closed out at the end of the fiscal year. This is the final report. Thank you.
Okay. No vote is required on Article 1. That's the report, and it's accepted. Now, we have Article 2. Let me, just before I read Article 2, say that we have a small glitch in the electronic The PowerPoint program was updated to 2012. Everything worked fine in 2010, and there's an old adage that musicians have, and especially woodwind players, you don't change reeds before a concert. And anyway, Ted is going back to get the 2010 version so we can quickly install it, and it should be available by the time we get to the major articles. Article 2, Town Manager Moves at the Town Amendment. The fiscal year 2012 operating budget voted under Article 3 of the spring annual town meeting held on April 25, 2011, and amended under Article 6 of the fall town meeting held on October 17, 2011 by transferring from the Finance Committee Reserve Fund the sum of $108,000 to the following budget line items. 10. Municipal facilities expenses, $40,000. 13. Community services, personnel services, $5,000. 14. Community service expenses, $58,000. 15. Library personnel services, $5,000. Now, we're going into the question-and-answer period, and this will apply for all of them. The microphone over there on your right, that is to be used for question and answer so that you don't block the view of the camera to the presentation board. And again, all questions are to be for factual information, not for debate, not for posturing. So, we are now in the question-and-answer period.
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, just as intro, a year ago at this time, we adopted the budget for the current fiscal year, which begins on July 1, 2011, and runs till June 30, basically two months from now. As is custom, at the fall annual town meeting, we make some adjustments, and then at this town meeting, again, we make some adjustments for things that basically transpired that were sort of unexpected six months ago. Four items you see listed. The first one, municipal facilities expenses, $40,000. Many of you may recall, when we left town meeting in October, it wasn't but about two weeks later where we had this early-season snowstorm that really was sort of the second time in three years that brought down a lot of power limbs, poles, and basically put us in a state of emergency in which we lost power to basically most of the town's municipal buildings. During that storm, the emergency generator at the old police station, which is now the current school administrative building, died. With the assistance of Walter Hedlund, our Emergency Management Director, we were able to get a loaner emergency generator to sort of get us through the final days of that state of emergency. We had the generator assessed. It was determined that it was at the end of its useful life, so we basically had to replace that generator with a new emergency generator that will power the entire building, which is not only the school administrative offices, but it is also the home of our Information Technology Center. And so, the cost for that work is approximately $40,000. Again, it involves the removal of the previous emergency generator, the installation of the new generator, equipping and getting it up. And also, we expanded it to cover the entire building because of the power demands in terms of the computers, as well as the cooling equipment for the technology equipment. The second item is the community services personnel services. As I noted earlier in my remarks this evening, our Council on Aging Director is retiring at the end of May by June 1st. We didn't foresee that in the budget for that transition, and as often the case, we've got to pay out in terms of accrued time, as well as the transition costs, and again, those will not exceed $5,000. Under community services expenses, we're seeking $58,000. That's for veterans' benefits. Regina Jackson, our Veterans Agent, has been very busy this year with an inordinate amount of assistance for those returning from our two overseas conflicts in Iraq and Afghanistan. The good news on this is that Regina does an excellent job in terms of servicing them and providing the assistance they need, and the state ultimately reimburses the town 75% of our costs. So, that $58,000 will actually return 75% within a year from the state upon the submission of our reimbursement documents. And then lastly, in the library, again, another small budget, like community services, we need a $5,000 appropriation into that budget because it's a standalone budget. One of the librarians, again, suffered an extended absence due to hip surgery and then rehabilitation from that, and so we incurred a significant cost in terms of keeping that position filled. So, those are the four adjustments that we seek this evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. We now have the question-and-answer period. Again, use that microphone. Not seeing any questions? Recommendations? Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen.
The Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
We're in a debate section. If you're for this article, you use the microphone to your right. If you're against it, use the microphone to your left. If you have any question that you didn't use up, or you didn't have time for in the question-and-answer period, you can use either microphone, and you can move the question from either microphone. Seeing no debate, we will go to a vote. All those in favor of Article 2, which appropriates $108,000 to the line items on the screen, please raise your card. All those opposed? Moderator sees a unanimous vote. Article 3.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we waive the reading of the article.
Motion's been made to waive the reading of the article. All those in favor, please raise your ticket. All those opposed? Presenter?
Who is presenting this? This is the Neshoba Valley Technical High School.
Hello. Hello. I'm Jane Savoy. I'm here from Neshoba Valley Technical High School. I'm the business manager there, and with me this evening, I have Jennifer Rhodes, who was the Chairman of our Expansion Planning Committee to admit the Town of Air to the district. We're pleased to present this article before you. We have almost 60 students from the Town of Air. The students have been coming to us from Air for almost 47 years without any representation on our board, and they're at the point now where their non-residential tuition's becoming very high for them to pay, and they would prefer to go through the regular system and have Chapter 78 and the typical more, the same system that you've been using for Chelmsford for a number of years. And we feel that it's the fair and the right and the fiscally responsible thing for the Town of Chelmsford and our other member towns to admit the people and the students from the Town of Air. As you can see, we use the process of our school committee voting and submitting it to the town rather than having the members, we're doing the, go through the whole thing with the collecting the 10% of the registered voters and so forth. So, we're at this point now where we have to come to the spring town, the special town meeting, so we've asked to present at this meeting. This is the article, and basically, with all the mumbo jumbo at the bottom of it all, we're just asking that you vote to admit the Town of Air. Mr. Cohen came to a recent meeting at our school, and he suggested we color in the map, and if we added Air, we'd kind of complete the donut, but I think we need to add a few more towns potentially, Lunenburg, Leamster Towns, Harvard, Boxbone, whatever, true donut. This is an idea of what your assessment would look like if we admitted the Town of Air. As you can see, the difference between having Air as a town and having, for your assessment, your assessment would go down maybe about $23,000 per year, in this particular year. As, if you can see, we are the second town above, so it's approximately $23,000 if they're in, because they'll have, they'll take another 10% of the budget approximately each year. So, whatever costs we have would be spread. And this is an idea of where we've gone, an idea of how much they would have paid if they'd been paying over their assessment with all the additional... they'd been paying over their assessment with all the additional costs that you have for transportation that you're assessed and the debt that you're assessed and the capital improvements that you're assessed for. This is a history of what the people of Air have been paying for their students. They have, the state determines what a non-residential tuition would be each year, and it fluctuates somewhat each year by a few hundred dollars. And currently, they've paid almost $54 million, $504 million over the last few years, and that's the reason why they'd like to join, and they're hoping to contain their costs. And some of the advantages, it will reduce the assessment to our other member towns, and we're hoping that we'll have a buy-in that will allow for us to do some major updates and some facility improvements. And if they become a member of Neshoba, we're hoping they won't go elsewhere, and we'll lose all that money altogether. And this will also help us maintain our budget without cutting into direct student services and coming back to you for more money. That's it.
Okay, we are now in the question and answer period. Again, use the microphone to your right. Anybody that has any questions that requires factual information, please come forward. Identify yourself by name and precinct number, and only reps can ask questions during this period.
Dave McLaughlin, Precinct 6. Will the Town of Air be required to buy into the system? You guys run a reserve. Also, you have a lot of assets on your books, or are they just going to pay an annual fee?
We were anticipating a buy-in. The Town of Air has not yet voted on the buy-in, and really, unless all the towns vote to actually admit the Town of Air, nothing can go forward, so this is the beginning of the process.
Do you know how much, roughly how much the buy-in might cost the Town of Air?
I do have some idea, and it is $550,000, but nothing is set in stone at this point, and as I said, we can't do anything unless the towns vote to admit.
Thank you.
Do we have any more questions? It would be quicker if you queue up during the question and answer period.
Claire Genot, Precinct 7. Good evening. I'd like to know, for the tuition that Air has paid in the past has been accumulated in a revolving account, what the balance is anticipated to be in that account at the end of this fiscal year, and what will happen with that once Air is now a member of the system, assuming a successful vote?
I did not bring up my budget information, but as usual, as you well know, we continue to have to backfill our monies from the towns. We obviously don't get enough money to maintain the district on the monies that we receive from assessments. We have to use some of our revolving accounts to backfill the money.
Well, do you know how much it was at the end of last June?
Not off the top of my head. I do not. I believe the article is to admit the Town of Air and not to discuss the budget.
Does that count as two questions or one?
Yes, one.
My second question is, I think one of your slides says that minimum, it will continue to help maintain the budget at minimum without impact to direct student services. Can you explain that, please?
As I said, this really isn't about the budget so much as it is about admitting the Town of Air. However, we have never gone over minimum, we don't request more than minimum. We've only requested more than minimum four times in the last 20-some-odd years.
Thank you.
Do we have any more questions?
Karen DiNato, Precinct 8. Can you explain a buy-in? I don't understand what a buy-in is.
Well, the district is, again, this is not about the money and not about the buy-ins, Mr. Moderator, it is actually about the article to admit here.
Well, I can't make a dis-
But the buy-in would, what the buy-in is, is they're buying into the, the school's an asset, and they're saying that going into that and owning a piece of that asset is worth so much money.
So when the buy-in money comes in, where does that get appropriated?
It will be voted by the school committee once they have the money to vote on it.
Does it get put into an operating budget? I guess is my question. Where does the money typically have to get appropriated for a buy-in?
I'm not sure where it'll be. It all depends on what it's going to be used for. Again, we're not discussing the buy-in, we're actually discussing whether the towns are going to or not going to admit the Town of Air.
When it's time for the budget, will you be presenting the budget to us?
That would be the case, I believe.
Okay, and you'll have the answers to those questions, then?
Well, not to the buy-in. I'm not going to be able to speak to the actual, until the Town of Air votes what the buy-in will be, I'm not sure what, how much, where, what, when. That's not part of the budget presentation. We don't have that money. I can't present a budget on money I don't actually have.
Okay. I just want to get us back to the book. Ask me the question, and I'll point it to the person that should answer it.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Sue Carter, Precinct 5. If the buy-in isn't part of the discussion tonight, will that come back to town meeting to approve what Air is being, is going to pay for the buy-in?
Town Council doesn't think so.
So we're going to be allowing Air to join the school district without having any idea of what they're paying towards all the assets the school department already has?
I guess you could take that interpretation.
Okay. How, you said that, or the speaker said that the buy-in is somewhere around $550,000. How did that number, how did you arrive at that number? And it's somewhat implied, but I'm not clear. Is it up to Air to decide whether or not they want to pay it or not? Or is it the school department, the Neshoba that says this is your share to buy into the ownership of all the assets?
There was a planning, expansion planning committee that came up with, agreeing with what they thought would be a fair amount for the Town of Air to pay. The Town of Air would need to bond that money. Obviously, I don't think they can spread it out of their operating budget, so until we have it, we don't know.
Okay, so we're being asked to, oh, sorry.
You go to the end of the line. Since you're at the end of the line, you can ask another one.
So, in other words, we're being asked solely on Air coming into the school districts tonight? Nothing about the fiscal benefit to the school or the school budget because of Air's joining them? It's purely on yes or no, Air comes in or Air doesn't?
That's the process, huh? That is the process. They can't, we can't, they can't go forward. The state can't, the school, the school committee will have to enter into the agreement with Air when the time comes.
Okay, it just seems like, well, that's, sorry, that's debate.
Kathy Duffett, Precinct 1. Mr. Moderator threw you to the speaker. Could we table this until Thursday and let the superintendent come and ask the finance questions? Because I think there's a lot of questions on finance, and I know that the article's not on finance, but we care about finance.
Are you making a motion to table?
Well, I'm not, I'm asking if, I guess I'm asking, could the superintendent come on Thursday and address our questions?
I have no idea what her schedule is for Thursday, but she had a choice of coming here or going to another town meeting, and she chose to go to the other town meeting and sent me here.
Should I make a motion to move it? In that case, could I make a motion to please table this until Thursday?
Yes. Come up to the mic and make it, please. Come up to the mic and make the point, please.
Mr. Moderator, Sam Polton, Precinct 8, and a member of the Neshoba School Committee representing Chelmsford since 1992. I thought we were in the question and answer period.
Yes, we are. That motion actually is out of order, you've got to wait for debate.
Okay. I didn't hear anybody say that motion is out of order.
No, thank you. Thank you, I should have caught it. Any more questions?
Kevin Porter, Precinct 7. Just the concept of buy-in. If Air buys in for $550,000, they're taking a certain portion of the pie, how does that affect the money for the buy-in for the other towns? Does it, any money that comes back to the other towns from that, since they're buying a portion of the pie and everybody else is, you know, essentially, is there any money that's coming back to some of the other towns if that happens, or are they just adding to what's already, we've already put into it?
The money is actually for capital projects and capital improvements, that's what the buy-in is about, is meant to be for.
Okay, so nothing would come back?
Obviously, nothing can come back.
Okay.
No, we wouldn't be writing checks to the other towns, no.
Kathy Duffett, Precinct 7. On the assessment, the projected assessment sheet, the debt service, they, because they're buying, my question is, Air is, they're showing a number of Air having, you know, a portion of the debt service projected going forward. So the extra capital that we allocated last year for your track and all that, will Air get an assessment towards that? There was some special amendment last year because you wanted to do extra improvements above and beyond the $100,000. Is Air going to get a percentage of that?
That was for the stabilization fund, that was not for a track, but whatever you are assessed, and there was no money, and the towns did not contribute to that. We actually had that, that was actually money we took from E&amp;D, which we weren't above, so it was okay. But the thing is, if you are assessed, Air will also be assessed. It's just going to be another town, member town, and whatever you are being assessed for, they'll be assessed their share as well.
If I may, through you, Mr. Moderator, my question is, and maybe someone else in the finance committee could recall this better than me, but last year, there was an additional assessment going forward for long-term capital, and wasn't there a $20,000? Do they, are they going to be, is Air going to be assessed for all the ongoing, I guess are they going to get the share of what debt and capital that is already on the board?
Mary?
Kathy, last year, we approved an amendment for them to establish, for the Neshoba School District to establish a stabilization fund. There was the potential that they could assess us additional money to put into the fund. At this point, they have not. They have made some deposits from reserves into the stabilization, but they have not assessed the towns anything extra to put in that stabilization fund to this point in time.
Okay, thank you for the question.
The assessment that's listed on there is, that Air would be participating in, is the debt service on the addition that was done that we've all been paying on since, when did the building complete, four or five years, five, six years ago?
Okay, thank you. But going forward, would Air have an assessment for that stabilization fund should you choose to assess towns? Okay, thank you.
Okay, let me remind you, this is question and answer, this is not debate. I don't want any response to anything anybody said. That'll come during the debate. Yes, question?
Mr. Moderator, Sam Polton, Precinct 8, still a member of the Neshoba School Committee. To Neshoba through the moderator.
Yes.
Isn't it true that if Air joins our district, all of the costs will be now spread among eight communities instead of seven communities? That Air is coming in and it's going to cost them money and save us money? We don't know what the amount is yet. Is that true?
That is correct.
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
That's correct. You are correct.
And one other question?
Yes.
It's true that there's a committee that was put in place, an ad hoc committee, that committee has met and done all sorts of things up to this point, and if Chelmsford votes yes, and we get an affirmative note, if we get an affirmative note, isn't it true that we then will finish the negotiations? We can't finish the negotiations until we take this step? Is that true?
Moderator, a call for the moderator to stop the speech.
Okay, make your point up at the microphone.
Excuse me.
Pointers can interrupt the speaker. Come up and make your point.
I actually am sorry, but I don't believe, my point of order is, I don't believe this is a question. Kathy Duffett, Precinct 7, point of order, I don't believe this is a question.
Point well taken. Ask a question.
The question is, is the process being followed whereby first, we have to get a vote yes or no before we can complete the negotiations with Air?
Yes.
Okay, any more questions? Hearing none, do I have a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends against this article, and I'd like Mr. McElvenner to explain briefly the position.
Good evening. The Finance Committee overwhelmingly supports Air's entrance into Neshoba, and the ongoing expenses here are not an issue. We think this is a benefit to the town, we think it's a benefit to Air. Okay, we think it's a benefit to the town and a benefit to Air and a benefit to everybody for the ongoing expenses for Air to join. We overwhelmingly support Air joining. Our two points that we have issues in while we're voting, why we voted to recommend against as the financial stewards to Utown Meeting are two of the issues we've heard already. One, to the committee's satisfaction at this point, although there was a committee that met to figure out what that buy-in amount was, we had asked and not received what that process was to say, okay, we all own a piece of Neshoba, right? They're going to own a piece of Neshoba. They did pay in over the last 40-some-odd years, so what did you start with? What did you give them credit for each year, and how did we come up with the buying amount that's equitable for our town from a financial standpoint? That was the largest issue, I believe, on the committee. The second was the uncertainty about if we take action tonight as a town meeting to approve this, and if, and we don't believe this would happen, but if that dollar amount were to change significantly, what recourse would the town have? As we vote on certain articles, we usually vote with dollar amounts. To our satisfaction as a committee, as a majority, that question wasn't able to be answered. If those answers come in between now and Thursday, that'd be something we could reconsider at that point. But those were it for the committee, was that? Okay.
Does the Board of Selectmen have a recommendation?
We actually recommend approval. We believe that this would have a positive effect on the town financially now and going forward regardless of what the buy-in amount is.
Okay, we are in the debate section. All those in favor, use the microphone to your right. All those against, use the microphone to your left. Anyone can move the question on any microphone. Go ahead, please. Question to me. Or debate to me.
Mr. Moderator, Sam Chase, Precinct 1, representative, threw you to the chairman of the Finance Committee. I would like to ask if your recommendation against was a unanimous vote of the committee?
No, it's not.
It was not a unanimous vote of the committee. Therefore, I would like to poll the committee, which is a poll of each member, to get an explanation of why they chose to vote to recommend or not to recommend.
We are going to poll the committee, and the chairman will call the people, and they will come up.
I guess we'll start at the far end, Sheila.
I decided to not recommend because if I do not know what the dollar amount is going to be for Chelmsford, I don't want to vote on anything. And basically, that was the bottom line. There were just so many gray areas. Our requests from Neshoba were not definitive, and basically, those are the reasons I had. Thank you.
Next. By the way, this is optional for the members, you don't have to defend your vote if you don't want to.
Voted not to recommend because there was not a demonstrated process for how the buy-in cost was calculated, and it appeared that there was not thorough financial diligence.
I also voted not to recommend, and I think you have the reasons.
I voted against because I think it's fiscally irresponsible, the amount of the buy-in costs and other factors in the amendment.
Mr. McElvenner voted not to recommend, and he has already given his reasons. I voted to recommend. I just, I guess I was willing to assume the process will work its way through, and I support Air's coming into the district.
Debate continues.
Our, we voted this recommend, this tonight, and so our seventh member was not present for that vote. and so our seventh member was not present for that vote.
Don't forget, if you're in favor, use that microphone. If you're against, use that one. And I'm going to alternate, so you can come right up to it.
Mr. Moderator, Sam Polton, Precinct 8. First, I want to thank everybody for all the hard work on this. I want to thank the Finance Committee for their deliberations, the Selectmen, and especially the committee, the ad hoc committee at Neshoba. This has been going on for quite some time, and the school committee voted after a presentation back in October to entertain AIR's request to join the district. I am very much in favor of this because what's in front of us tonight is whether or not Chelmsford is going to vote to make AIR an official part of the district. I've been on the committee since 1992, and every year, AIR has sent students either tuitioned in. Way back when AIR had Fort Devens as an active duty post, the federal government used to send us money. From year to year, we never knew what to expect from AIR. How many students are we going to get from AIR? Are we going to get more, are we going to get fewer? And AIR never paid their fair share for the facilities because they were just tuitioning in students. We have an opportunity tonight to make official what has been ad hoc for 40 years. At the beginning, as you saw in your little booklet, AIR was going to join. At the last minute, they withdrew when they realized they had to pay for the expansion of the building. They now realize that it's better to buy in than to continue to be paying without any say in what's going on. So in return for their one proportional vote, they are now willing to give us substantial money, at least a half a million dollars, to buy into that asset, and then to share the assessment, as everybody else does, using the formula. And lastly, everybody is talking about how much. We don't know yet, not because anybody is trying to obscure or withhold. We don't know yet because the negotiations haven't been completed. But it will be on a proportional basis. AIR is going to send approximately 60 students, and their buy-in is going to be based on the number of students that they've been sending us over the last 15 or so years. It's all in the material that we provided. So I would very much like to vote this tonight. I think that we would be more than anxious to have the finance committee participate with us as we continue that negotiation. I can assure you that we're asking tonight to allow money to come to Chelmsford, not money to leave Chelmsford. If AIR comes in, our assessment absolutely positively goes down, and AIR will become an official member of the district with all the responsibilities that that takes. Please vote yes tonight so we can send a clear message to AIR that we want them before they choose another district. If AIR goes to another district, not only won't they join Neshoba, we won't have benefit of those students and the money that they bring. I urge you to vote yes. Thank you.
Karen DiNardo, Precinct 8, I'd like to make a motion to table this until Thursday night.
Until when?
Thursday evening.
I don't think we can do that. We're going to do it in this session.
What do I need to do then?
Okay, we have a motion to table this until Thursday evening.
Can I give my reasons?
Yes.
Basically, because I'd like to give the Finance Committee time to receive the information from Neshoba that they have requested. Year after year after year, Neshoba stands up there and can never answer our questions regarding how much money they have in their revolving funds. And it's just to a point now where our Finance Committee can't even do due diligence to give us a recommendation on an article. So I would like to give Neshoba time until Thursday evening. I'm not saying I'm against it. I'm just saying that I feel the Finance Committee needs enough time in order to look at the numbers that they need.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to table this until Thursday. It only requires a majority vote. And since Ted hasn't come back yet, we'll have to do it by the raising of hands.
Mr. Moderator, can anybody speak to that motion?
Yes.
May I speak to it? I'm an appointed member to the Neshoba Tech.
Are you speaking against it?
Speaking for it.
Oh, for it, go ahead. Are you speaking for her motion?
No.
I'm speaking against her motion.
Well, then you can.
Excuse me. I'd like to ask you all to consider this tonight and not put it off. We've worked with AIR for some odd 40 years. I'm on the AIR, I'm on the school committee up there, I represent you.
Let me interrupt you. Actually, if you look at your order of precedence of motions, to lay on the table is not debatable. We have to vote it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So all those.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to, I don't know if I'm amending my motion, but I'd like to make the motion to table it till after Article...
It is debatable, yes.
Twenty-nine.
Okay. I stand corrected. It is debatable, so you can get back up.
I thought it was, but you were so not truthful, right? Again, I'd like to ask each of you to consider voting this now, tonight, so that a message can go to AIR that they're welcome as full members to Neshoba Tech. I was, I asked to be on this ad hoc committee. We started in October. We went with members of the towns. We asked them what they felt about it. Matter of fact, some of the numbers went back and forth. Some of them I actually raised because I felt we should get more. The net event of this vote and AIR's acceptance of the conditions that we intend to send, to impose on them would be a net saving of approximately $23,000 a year to the town of Chelmsford. And I urge you not to vote to put this off and to vote it tonight. Thank you.
Do we have anybody else pro or con? Okay, motion on the table to postpone to a time certain, which is next Thursday?
And can I say after Article 24?
After Article 24.
Move this article to after 24.
Yeah, that's a different motion.
Okay, so what's my motion?
Just go to Thursday. First order of business.
Thomas Fall, Precinct 5, I oppose the amendment. If she, if the rep moves it to Article after 24, we have no idea whether, when Article 24 is going to be brought forward. Therefore, if she has this motion to move it after Article 24, I'm concerned Article 24 may not come before us on Thursday night. Thank you.
Point of order?
Yes.
Brian Latina, Precinct 4, the motion should be handed to the clerk in writing so there's not any conflict in what was, what the motion was. And then you can read it to us. Thank you.
Point well taken. Could you please do it in writing and pass it by Town Council?
Ralph Halslander, Precinct 8, and of Neshoba Tech School Committee, lucky. I think it's a win-win situation.
Are you speaking, we're talking now about the motion to postpone. So if you're against postponing, you can state why you're against it. But we're not talking about the main motion. Just a postponement thereof.
Okay. I'll wait.
Claire Gennar, Precinct 7, I'm hoping I'm at the right microphone. I'm rising in support of this motion to postpone this till Thursday night. My guess is that almost everybody in this room expected to come in here tonight and welcome AIR. That we all recognize that they've been sending this, they don't belong to a regional vocational district, and they should. That they've been sending their students to this wonderful school for a long time. But I think that the questions everybody's raised from the floor here tonight deserve an answer, so does the Finance Committee, obviously. And I wholly support this in hopes that, whether it be by virtue of reading the press tomorrow, or maybe Gwarten is getting the answers to these questions tonight, and we'll find out from the newspaper, or any other reason, we can only stand to gain and have a better outcome if we wait.
Let me ask, you said you wholly support, do you support the postponement?
The motion to postpone, that's what's on the table, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify it. Yes.
Mr. Moderator, Jody O'Neil, Precinct 7, a question to you, to the presenter. Do you feel that you may have any of these answers for us for Thursday? Is there any reason to postpone?
May I? I don't know that postponing is going to help. We're not going to have, AIR's not going to vote. They're not going to vote, and so they don't get the bond in. We don't know about the dollar amount. Before we can do anything, before the process can go through, we have to vote to actually allow the town to join. All the other towns have to vote, AIR has to vote. And then they have to vote on a dollar amount. So until that really happens, we don't know for sure what we're going to have.
I don't believe you answered my question, though. Do you think you'll have any of these numbers for us, with certainty?
No, no, AIR won't vote till next Monday. And I don't know if they're bringing the bond issue. Are you aware whether they're going to be bringing the bond?
They are not bringing the bond.
The bond issue won't come out till fall. And then, still, we'll have to wait for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to approve the admission of the town, of AIR, and the amendment to our town.
Okay, so just for clarification, you can clearly hear the body is looking for more information and numbers and stating that there will be no additional members.
We're not going to be able to get them. All I can tell you, if AIR becomes a member, obviously, all the towns' assessments are going to go down because you're going to have another member, you're going to get by.
I understand that, but I was.
So that, that, and if there is a buy-in, it's for capital improvements, I don't really know that, you know, the townspeople, other than the, it's going to go back to the district school committee at that point. We're not going to have numbers. We're not going to be able to have numbers.
Does anyone wish to speak against that motion to postpone? Or in favor? Are you in favor or against?
I'm in favor of the motion to table, but I'm not sure which mic to use. And may I, may I ask a question directly to the moderator for Town Meeting? In 1998, Town Meeting had two microphones, and Town Meeting voted to eliminate the second microphone for exactly this reason.
Makes no difference. That's not what's up for discussion right now, and that's out of order.
Okay.
So I have a motion on the floor to postpone this to Thursday night. All of those in favor, please raise your hands. This is to postpone Article 3 till Thursday night.
Read the motion.
The motion. Motion to postpone consideration of Article 3 until the first order of business on Thursday night. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. It's an overwhelming majority against, so it is not postponed. We're back on the main motion.
This is debate, Mr. Moderator?
That's the pro, con on the main motion. If you're against the main motion, you stay there. If you're for it, you take three steps sideways.
Brian Latina, Precinct 4, I would like to have made my comment in the previous motion, but I'll do it now. This is pretty complicated. It, it's kind of like having five people living in a house for 40 years and having one tenant helping pay the rent. That tenant doesn't really have a vote, but they pay kind of what the mortgage and the house upkeep is. And then you, you go and you put a new roof on, and you put a new shed in the back and a garage, and the six people that own the home pay towards that capital improvement. And then the tenant comes in after all that work is done and says, "I'd like to put in a hot tub as my contribution to the roof and the garage and the shed." It's not, it's not an even split for all those years of building everything else that we did in that building. But it's, it's a little bit. It's a little bit. The problem I've got right now, and the reason I'm going to vote no on this, is because I don't know what the right number is for AIR to pay towards the capital improvements of that facility that I remember Chelmsford really having a hard time about having to pay for the improved, a bigger improvement there than the Chelmsford High School, Middle School program where we spent about $30 million. The other towns voted to do that improvement, and we kind of got stuck with the bill. Now the new town is coming in, and they don't have to pay back the amount that Chelmsford paid and the rest. And that's kind of the way I'm looking at this. Yes, there's a $23,000 benefit to us, we think. I don't know if it's been audited. But we really ought to get a piece of the principal back, and we should know what that figure is. If we're not going to get it back, the taxpayers of this town ought to know how much we're not getting back. The tuition is not an equal share of paying the capital over all these years. It really isn't. And $23,000 really isn't a lot of money in a $105 million budget. So I'm going to vote no. It can come back. We can, we can vote on it again when we have proper figures. I didn't hear any answers on the figures. We're a very financially oriented town. We do care about these kids. I have a plumber that came from Neshoba, I love the school. We pay a lot of money for these kids to get trained. It's a great school. But I'm very concerned about the capital that we've invested and the fact that we don't know what those figures are and whether it's $550,000 or not. Thank you.
Sam Polton, Precinct 8, I'd like to call the question.
We have a motion to call the question. Requires a two-thirds majority vote. Ted, are we ready? No. All those in favor, please raise your tickets. All those opposed, please raise your tickets. Moderator sees more than a two-thirds majority. So now we have the main motion. And the motion is, Samuel Polton moves that the town accept a proposal of the Regional District School Committee passed on October 11, 2011, to amend the agreement establishing the Neshoba Valley Technical District as amended. And basically, what it's saying is it's going to allow the town of AIR to join. So if you vote yes, you're allowing the town of AIR to join. If you vote no, you're not allowing the town of AIR to join. Now, I'm told by Town Council, this only requires a majority vote, but it requires a unanimous vote of all the towns. So if you vote this down, AIR can't join. Okay? All those in favor of this motion, please raise your tickets. Opposed? The ayes have it. Now I have a motion here before I start Article 4, which was passed through Town Council. And it says, "I, Robert P. Joyce of Precinct 1, move to postpone consideration of Article 4 in Article 9 until after consideration of Article 10." Mr. Joyce, would you like to come up and explain your motion? Mr. Joyce, you can use that microphone so that we can send answers to you, questions to you.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting members.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. I propose this because depending upon what happens in Article 10, there may be changes to the budget specifically in the area of debt. And if we, if we don't approve the fire station, then there needs to be some changes. And, so that's why I'm proposing it.
Any questions? Do I have a recommendation from the Finance Committee? No recommendation. Reclamation, recommendation from the Selectmen?
No recommendation.
No recommendation. If you agree to this motion, we will be postponing Articles 4 and Article 10. Now, we're in a debate section.
No. No.
I'm sorry, 4 and 9. Any debate?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to speak to this article. I'd like to speak to the article under debate. Town meeting members, I'd ask you to proceed with the articles in the order as presented on the warrant. Under the provisions of the town charter, the town manager is responsible for presenting a balanced budget to the community. The budget you will receive under Article 4, including the capital budget under Article 9, is a balanced budget. And that, and in that balanced budget, I include all the articles on the warrant, including Article 10 for a fire station. And I guess the request is, well, what happens if the fire station doesn't pass? Well, then, I would remind the town meeting that in the town of Chelmsford, since we have a quarterly billing system, we do not set the tax rate until really December. And so what that means is if there are some actions that come out of tonight's action meeting, they can be addressed at the fall annual town meeting, or a special town meeting in, in the meantime. Because what will happen is, is we'll come back, we'll make adjustments in the fall, and then, as you know, the then process then goes to a hearing before the Board of Selectmen, and then the budget's approved, and tax, actual tax bills are not mailed till the end of December. So I really don't see the need for this article, and I would ask that you proceed with the budget in its entirety as presented. Thank you.
Do we have a counter argument?
Mr. Moderator? I, I failed to mention also that we have many people here for Article 10 tonight, and it would be good to get that out of the way. That's part of my, part of my goal.
Okay, you've heard the arguments, pro and con. The motion is to postpone consideration of Articles 4 and 9 until after consideration of Article 10. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Motion is defeated. Article 4.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we waive the reading of the Article 4.
Have a motion to waive the reading on Article 4. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Article is waived.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As the presenter of the article, basically, this is the town's omnibus budget for the upcoming fiscal year, and as you can see, we listed, we voted by line item categories, as is printed in your, in your thin book, which is the Finance Committee Recommendation Book, as well as in the thicker book that has the town budget. Basically, as I noted earlier, the budget process starts back in October. We send out budget requests to town boards and departments. We then have joint meetings between the Finance Committee, the School Committee, and the Board of Selectmen to review the budgetary process for the year. In, in November, we come back in December. I present, under the provisions of the charter, a balanced budget by the end of January, and then the Finance Committee holds budget hearings in January, in February, and then makes its recommendations in March for the budget that's here. Basically, here's the highlights of this year's budget. It provides basically level services to continue the operations of the town, and basically, there are some additions beyond that. The most notable is we provide an additional $1.43 million, or 3.1% increase in funding for the Chelmsford Public Schools. And the most notable thing is that we'll be employing 15 new teaching positions in this upcoming fiscal year's budget. We also have the restoration of two additional police officers, so we'll go from 33 to 35 patrol officers, and really, this is an issue, again, paramount to the chief, and obviously under our goals, to address traffic safety, particularly in the neighborhoods. And then finally, in terms of our, our maintenance facilities position, we're going to restore two maintenance facilities positions that were cut back at the depths of the recession in 2008, so we'll go back from, from nine up to 11 maintenance workers to care for the town's 30 buildings and fields. Real highlights of the budget, obviously, in terms of what revenue sources we have, our biggest component, 75% of our budget is the property tax. We forecast $1.8 million, which is our allowed increase under Proposition 2.5, and we're forecasting with the assistance of the Board of Assessors, $975,000 in new growth. So basically, $2.8 million in property tax levy. Obviously, it's a paramount concern, what's going on in the town of Chelmsford, we hear about concerns over the property tax bill. Every town meeting, we update this chart over the last 10-year period, and as you can see, our actual ranking, yes, taxes are going up, they're going up in Chelmsford, they're going up everywhere across the Commonwealth, because it's really the only funding source that's going up in this time of economic challenge. And so you can see, earlier in the decade, we were 63rd, one being the highest single, single-family property tax bill in the Commonwealth. We're now down at the 70th. As you can see, obviously, taxes are going up everywhere, we're actually slightly improving what's going on across the state and similar communities of Chelmsford. Also, the other thing is that if you took the average single-family tax bill five years ago and compounded it by 2.5%, which is the allowed increase under Proposition 2.5%, then basically, the budget would have increased, the average single-family bill would have increased from 49.66, which it was in fiscal year 2007, to $5,618 this current fiscal year. And as you can see, the actual bill was only $35 more at 56.53. So basically, you're seeing taxes increase in the town of Chelmsford at, at 2.5% per year. Our other big thing to note about property taxes is fortunately, our excluded debt service is decreasing. Basically, that's the debt on the initial phases of the sewer project, on the $31 million high school and middle school project, and also included in that is the DPW off-road project. We're seeing a decrease of $575,000 for this upcoming fiscal year, which will basically offset almost a third of the allowed 2.5% increase for this upcoming fiscal year. So again, we expect our ranking would continue to decline. What are our other funding sources? The next biggest one is state aid. State aid roughly represents about 15% of our budget. You can see that state aid has decreased by 1 point, almost $1.2 million, or 7.45% during the last five years. So we're, we're dealing now with less state aid, and then in terms of local receipts, local receipts are roughly 8% of our budget, half of that, more than half of that is motor vehicle excise. We're projecting that local receipts for the upcoming year will be the actual amount, the 8.12, 8.12 million dollars that it was five years ago. So again, we don't have any growth in local receipts over this period. And then we have available funds from special revenue funds, which are just, you can see minor offsets, and it actually decreases by about $60,000 for the year. And then the, the other question is, well, how is the money being expended? The budget increase is roughly 2.23% of 2.35, 3.35 million dollars, and you can see the areas, again, that are highlighted, $1.4 million to Chelmsford Public Schools, another $200,000, our 11% increase because of our increased enrollment at Neshoba Tech, $420,000 additional to public safety. We do have the decline in benefits and insurance because of the municipal health insurance reform that we implemented just roughly six months ago. And then our debt service is increasing, as I noted earlier, to incorporate the projects that are being brought forth at the meeting this evening. And real, other high expenditure notes of interest, again, the public schools are going up by 3.1%, while their enrollment is declining by 95 students to 52.26. Again, our Neshoba Tech assessment is increasing by 11 students to 144. So Chelmsford roughly is, is almost a quarter of the students that attend to Chelmsford Tech. We're seeing solid waste disposal costs increase by $51,000. Basically, it's an indicator of the economy. We, we're basically disposing of more trash and more recyclables as things slowly improve from the depths of the recession. And also, our collection costs, which is the collection of that solid waste, that we're in the third year of that contract with a slight increase in the collection cost that was bid. As I noted earlier, our veterans' benefits are increasing, so we're going to forecast that in the budget. Our assessment to the retirement board is increasing by 4.42%, or 200, roughly $250,000 to $5.9 million. Our employee health insurance, I noted, is decreasing due to the reduction in, as a result of municipal health insurance reform. And as I noted, our non-excluded debt service brings our whole increase of, of $2.70, $270,000 for our capital expenditure plan portion. Again, we give you a five-year history of the budget. Again, where we've been spending our money, I hope and I believe that is where we want to prioritize. Areas of education, you can see, $4.78 million over the last five years, over 11%. Neshoba Tech, again, our assessment's gone up by over 45% to over $2 million because of our increased enrollment there. We've put over $1 million in public safety and benefits insurance, obviously being a critical one in terms of its portion of the budget, it's roughly 17% of our budget. And again, over $2 million has gone over there net, even with the, the implementation of municipal health insurance reform. So in essence, our staffing levels remain over 90 positions where we were five years ago, so we're down still in positions, and we're moving from there. At this point, I'd like to turn the budget over to, I think Kathy McWilliams is going to do a presentation regarding the Chelmsford Public Schools budget.
I'm Frank Tiano of the Superintendent of Schools. Before Kathy begins her presentation, I'd just like to give you a brief overview of our financial picture. Before I begin, I'd like to thank Mr. Cohen for this opportunity to share the FY13 budget with you folks. I'm going to touch on a few highlights, and then Kathy will, will take you through the PowerPoint presentation. She'll be moving fairly quickly through the presentation, and hopefully you've seen this online or at several of our presentations. At the end of it, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. And we also ask that you feel free to contact either Kathy or myself throughout the school year, should you have any questions. As you know, this is the second year that Kathy has posted the actual spending online on a monthly basis, and we appreciate the feedback that we've had from some of you folks who, who've been following that and responding to us. In your packet, you'll see a level service budget for next year. And as I mentioned last year, this has not been an easy task. However, along with the generous support that we've had from the town, the school administration has spent the past few years looking at how we could reorganize our department so that it continues to provide an excellent education for our children, and do it more efficiently and more cost-effectively. Essentially, we've been trying to stay true to our core mission and live within our financial means. A lot of our success has come through thinking differently and reaching out to collaborative partners. For example, we've engaged other towns for cost savings and service consolidation. Next year, we'll be sharing our out-of-district transportation contract with the towns of Tewksbury and Billerica, and we will also be sharing the Food Service Director with Billerica Public Schools as well. FY13 will also be our second year partnering with a private organization for custodial services, and we have opened our website, which is over a million hits per month for private advertising to try and generate some revenue. As you're aware from previous presentations, we've garnered efficiencies and increased service by working collaboratively with other town departments, most notably through our IT departments. Again, thank you, Mr. Cohen, and our school committee for their full support and their efforts. Would also like to thank publicly our parents and our local businesses who have been more than generous with their time and their resources, and help us support the public schools on a day-to-day basis. Like to recognize our teachers and administrators, who do a fantastic job every single day, so we can have a successful school district that consistently has MCAS scores that are way above the, the state average in all areas and all grade levels. A successful district that was named this year by the State College Board of the Annual Advanced Placement to their honor roll for significant success in our advanced placement scores. And also, Chelmsford's been chosen one of four districts across the country to partner with CAS as a partner to, partner with our UDL project in, in our literacy instruction. And just a, a successful district where we've had numerous students, numerous teams in areas of all the arts, music, theater, sports, who have just been outstanding, who represent and compete locally across the state and across the country, representing Chelmsford. I'd like to thank you for all of your support. I'd like to turn it over to Kathy right now.
Hi, I'm Kathy McWilliams. Good evening. I want to focus on, on the presentation, the main bottom line. I don't know if anyone's been on our website, but we've had all of this up since probably I'm going to skip to the, the bulk of the budget, right here, because this is, it's a busy slide, but it's also, if you want to print it, you can see it. What I want to point out originally is on line 12 and 13, classroom teachers. We are, we haven't even gone over our staffing for FY13. If it appears in the town book that we had an increase in staff, we really haven't. This is a level service budget with some extra money put towards technology. This year, I went through the MUNIS system to make sure we had an accurate count on the FTE, so FY13 has the accurate count. In the past, I'm not quite sure where the numbers were coming from. Last year was my first year giving the new numbers on FTE, so I want to show that over the time since 2010, our FTEs for teaching actually has decreased. I just want to be clear, because I noticed on the town side tonight that there was 15 new positions. That's news to me, I don't have 15 new positions. I just want everyone to realize that. The total budget for the school appropriated budget is line 46. It's 40, 46 million, I can't see it from here, but I'll try to read it. 46 million, 615,662, and that represents a 3.1% increase. The rest of the budget tries to show you other funds that we use to supplement the budget. The bottom line for the entire budget with grants and revolving revenue is 52,143,303. But that's really not our entire budget either, because we also get charged for health insurance and unemployment, and, not unemployment, actually, health insurance and benefits, facility costs. So the total budget for us is closer to, oh, sorry, closer to 62 million, just so you know, because a lot of people don't understand that you're voting 47 million, and the total budget for the school is this high. And Paul did point out that we do have a declining enrollment. I just wanted to show, over time, the trend is going down. We can tell that with our kindergarten registrations. So slowly, we have seen a decrease in our enrollment. And Frank brought out that Chelmsford cost per pupil is lower than the state average, while we also do much better in MCAS, and that next slide shows where Chelmsford comparably to other districts. I know this is fast, but I don't want to maybe bore you if you didn't ever see this before, but this is the interesting stuff, where we look at the total cost per pupil, Chelmsford, 11,000 roughly. What we get in Chapter 70, lower than many places, how we do on 10th grade, ELL, and math. So Chelmsford does a great job with their MCAS scores. We chose, there's 11 communities that are considered comparable communities to Chelmsford, and if you look, you can look at Barnstable, Billerica, and you can see how Chelmsford is doing. Chelmsford does a great value for their dollar, and I'm sure you all notice how well your children are doing in school, and it's commendable. And this final, near the end slide shows the other towns that are comparable to Chelmsford. And I think that's it, for me. So if anybody has any questions, I know you have to go right or left, for or against.
Questions on this microphone? Questions must, may, must be for gathering information only.
I believe I have the right microphone, Mr. Moderator. Sam Chase, Precinct 1, through you to Ms. Williams, McWilliams. Going back to your slide, where you show the expenditure categories, it's on, it's an Excel spreadsheet.
First one.
That's the one, that's the one. I have a question. Roughly a quarter of the way down, the item is curriculum directors. And for fiscal year 2011, you show a budgeted amount of $313,000. You show a budgeted amount in 12 of-
1 million.
1 million, and then- One million, and then roughly a same amount. Can you explain the difference between those numbers? How we go from $313,000 in 2011 to over $1 million in 2012?
The total is curriculum directors and department heads. Previously, we have 9.8 in total, and previously, we used to just have them all in one line. And this year, we coded them to where they belong, and there was a contract difference. We did go to a K through 12 curriculum coordinator positions. And last year also, our assistant superintendent was one of the curriculum coordinated positions, so we had to create and have a new curriculum coordinator this year that took over that position. So it's actually 9.8 people that is a cost of $1 million.
It still looks like about a $600,000 jump to me, if you add the curriculum director to the department head line item that's right under it in 2011. Another line is textbooks and media materials about halfway down the page.
Line 18.
We show a reduction, we show a reduction from $617,000 to $242,000, and then a similar amount budgeted for the upcoming year. Can you explain the reduction, why we're taking a reduction in that line?
In the, is it line 18?
If I can see, yes.
Yeah, sorry. Last year, we purchased in a grant the textbook material that we needed. So this year, it pretty much remains flat unless I'm reading it wrong.
I'm reading out of the Finance Committee book, so maybe I've got bad information here. No offense to the Finance Committee. I'm looking at the fiscal 2011 amount that's listed in the Finance Committee book.
What page number is that?
Page 27.
Okay, so I'm close.
And it shows that we have an actual amount of $617,000.
That's because we used, that, this amount includes all the grants, and...
All right.
So she, that's the way they do that, and so it shows the entire amount. So on the bottom, if you went to the next page of this, oh, sorry, Beck, you would see that I had some grants that supplemented, and it was the textbooks, it was the stimulus. See the 306 right here on line 56? That's, that was all for textbooks.
Okay, thank you.
So it's just confusing.
No, I understand. Thank you very much.
Chairman of the Finance Committee would like to comment.
You're going to see sort of two different presentations. What I like to do is show how they expend money, all the money they get, as opposed to this particular layout, which is how they spend the appropriated budget. So that's why you saw two years ago, they spent $600,000 on textbooks. They were able to do that because, because they had a grant money, and so that's what our book shows. In fact, out, that year too, they probably only used about $200,000 out of the appropriation for textbook, with the rest of it coming from grant money. And I would take your, you know, if people want to input to me afterward, how we might best present this, I'd love to hear it. It just seems to me, I like to know, what's the total they're expending out of all resources? And that's what I show in the charts that we put in the Finance Committee book.
Do you have any other question?
Kathy Tebaldi, Precinct 1. This is sort of a combined Article 1, Article 5 question. My question is, I heard that the windows were leaking all over the place at the high school when they came back from vacation, and I was wondering how the superintendent might help the committee make sure that we don't finish, it was in math and science, there was leaking all over, in several of the classrooms at the high school. The question is, how does the, is the superintendent going to work with the committee so we don't pay all of the window bill until the windows are sealed tight and working well?
The maintenance of the facilities is not, is the responsibility of the Facilities Maintenance Department, and so I'm going to ask Gary Persketti, our Facilities Maintenance Director, as well as a key member of the Project Committee, to speak to that.
I would have asked this, but we couldn't really ask questions for Article 1, so I'm kind of stretching it.
Good evening. Not to make light of anything, but when you install the amount of windows we did at the high school, a few windows leaking is not uncommon. As part of that, because it was MSBA money, we had to do commissioning through MSBA. All the commissioning we did found no leaks to the windows that were tested, per their instruction. Just to date, we hold $103,000 of the money. They don't owe us nearly that much work, so we have no issues, or we will get what we need and it done.
Thank you very much.
Without any issue. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, do we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 4.
Do we have a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval of Article 4.
Do we have a recommendation from the School Committee?
School Committee recommends approval of Article 4.
Okay, we are in the debate section now. If you're in favor, please speak to that microphone. If you're against, please speak to that microphone. If you have questions, you can, additional questions, you can use any microphone.
Sue Carter, Precinct 5. I would just like to thank the Chelmsford School Committee for being prepared and answering our questions, unlike Neshoba. And I wish you could give them a seminar on how to prepare for town meeting.
Any other comments? Pro or con?
I'm sorry, I have a question. Are all collective bargaining agreements settled, and what sort of raises are in here for non-union people? I don't mean the schools, I mean the general government. Well, I guess all government.
Well, the answer through you, Mr. Moderator, all bargaining agreements are settled through this upcoming fiscal year. Roughly, the percentage increases about 2.5 percent to the salary schedules. Remember, that was the end of a three-year agreement, in which the first years often were zeros, and then in most cases, it was 2.5 percent for this final year.
And how many times did the Personnel Board meet this year?
I don't believe they met, they did not meet.
Thank you.
Paul, this is the whole article, correct? Here, indeed, not a precinct date. Do you know the answer to the previous speaker's question regarding the amount of money in the revolving fund for Neshoba Valley?
I don't know the exact amount. I think, I think having been with some of the committee meetings, it was around $2 million, I believe, is in their tuition account. And then they also have a choice account of around $1 million, if memory serves me correct. But I don't, but again, that's not relevant in terms of the appropriation of this article. We are assessed our minimum required contribution...
Right, that's what I'm getting to.
Plus, we assess the transportation fee to Neshoba Tech, plus a portion of the $100,000 capital appropriation every year.
So regarding the $100 capital appropriation...
Yes.
Once that number is determined from AIR coming in...
Through you, Mr. Moderator. AIR will not join the district for this upcoming fiscal year. If AIR is accepted, then it will...
Okay, that was another question.
There'll be a member of the district as of July 1st, 2013, which would be the fiscal year 14 budget, not this budget that we're voting tonight.
Okay, and can that money impact our budget for the $100,000 capital, so that could go away when that money comes in? Is that a budget item?
That, again, that, are you talking for 14 or for 13? For the upcoming year?
So I have to ask that next year, you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good.
Any more comments, either for or against? Seeing none, we will now vote. I'll ask Ted, are we prepared? Not yet. All those in favor of Article 4, which is a town budget? Please raise your tickets. All those against? Article 5, Town Manager.
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, as shown on the screen, this article is for the sewer enterprise budget, which is basically the entire budget that stands alone for the operation of the town's municipal sewer system. As you can see, we're seeking $817,000 for personnel and $2.56 million for expenses. Basically, why this is voted separately is that it is an enterprise fund, which basically there's a separate accounting and financial reporting mechanism for the town sewer system, which basically in English means that all the revenues and expenditures of the sewer operations are segregated and accounted for separately, and therefore they self-supporting. And the best news, and what you really want to know is, is that sewer rates are scheduled to remain unchanged for the upcoming fiscal year.
Have questions, please, on this microphone, microphone to your right. Seeing no questions, we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Recommendation from the Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen recommends approval of Article 5.
Any debate? In favor, please use that microphone to your right. If you're against, microphone to your left. Additional questions can be from either one. Seeing nobody up for debate, we will take, we will vote a question. Only requires a majority vote. All those in favor, raise your tickets. All those against, motion passes. Article 6, Town Manager Moves That the Town Appropriate $35,000 in Expenses to Operate the Golf Course Enterprise Fund for Fiscal Year 2013, and that $35,000 be raised from the golf course enterprise revenues. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you, again, the golf course operations are formerly known as the Chelmsford Country Club, self-funding, self-contained, accounted for a separate operating entity. We, the town contracts with a professional golf course management company to operate the course, and again, any retained earnings that would be left over in this would go towards future capital reinvestment in the golf course facility. So again, this has no impact on the tax rate. The golf course operation supports itself, and this is why we voted the enterprise fund to be effective last October. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, we're in question and answer. Anybody have any questions? Use the microphone on your right. Seeing none, do I have a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen recommends approval of Article 6.
We are now in debate for Article 6. If you're for it, you use the mic to your right. If you're against it, use the mic to your left. Seeing nobody queued up, all those in favor of Article 6, raise your tickets. All those opposed, Article passes. Article 7. Town Manager Moves That the Town Raise and Appropriate $400,000 to Be Used as a Reserve Fund at the Discretion of the Finance Committee for Fiscal Year 2013, as provided in General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 6. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, this is voted to provide a reserve fund to the Finance Committee for extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures that may arrive during the course of the fiscal year. Basically, requesting the same amount as the current year of $400,000, or basically 0.37 percent of the town's $107 million budget.
Do we have any questions? Seeing none, do we have Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen recommends approval of Article 7.
We're in a debate section. If you're for it, you use the mic to the right. If you're against it, the mic to the left. Seeing no one, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 7, which is the golf course, I'm sorry, Finance Committee Reserve Fund, please raise your ticket. All those against, Article passes. Article 8.
Mr. Moderator, I move to waive the reading of Article 8.
Motion to waive the reading of Article 8. All those in favor, raise your ticket. All those against, reading is waived. Mr. Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, that, what this is, is this is an annual renewal under state law of the revolving funds, which is basically, again, these are self-funded activities that take place that allow revenues to come in to pay for the expenditures. Again, for the town clerks in terms of fees from rabies clinics, adoption and pound fees go to pay for the costs associated with licensing those animals. Council on Aging, you know, runs trips for seniors, the money we collect for the trips for the seniors that then go pay for the trips. Also, for their senior respite care program that's offered in this building, those who participate in the program pay for those, and then the revenues that are collected go to pay the expenses. Similarly, for the police department, the money we receive for the trade-in of the cruisers go to be used to equip the new cruisers that are purchased. And then inspections, we contract, I'm sorry, we contract with the NIMCO, the Middlesex Council of Government for sealings and weights and measures. Again, the money that's collected from that, when they go out and make sure that you buy, you get a gallon of gas when you pay for it, or the scales and the scanners in the stores, those fees that those businesses pay for those licenses, then go to pay for those inspections. So again, this has no impact on the tax levy. The legislature requires that we annually reauthorize these funds. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Any questions on this article? Please use the microphone to your right.
George Ripson, Precinct 4, and I'm addressing the wording of this article for the police department, and it says that all of the money that's received will go into the revolving fund, but that the expenditures for outfitting communication equipment will be limited to $20,000. Where is the additional money going?
Oh, in our cap, in the, well, in the operating budget, we purchased the cruisers. This is just for the trade-ins. If there's any balance left over, it stays in the fund to the next fiscal year. But basically, it's, as you can see, the amount for the entire year is less than $20,000. We cannot exceed that amount as set by this meeting.
But there is more money than the $20,000 that we'll expect to find there, right? So that that'll go forward to a future year?
No, if there's any balance left over, it carries forward to the future year. This is not the actual purchase of the vehicles, that's in the operating budget. This is basically, they have to go in and put, you know, new light bars and those other computers and other stuff. So if there's any balance left over, we carry it forward.
We could then, in future years, see an expected expenditure of 50, 100, whatever the need is at that time.
No, no, we would never be at that pace. We, in the operating budget, we pay for the actual vehicles themselves. This is just the ancillary equipment that goes in there. So we're not, we don't foresee any opportunity where we'd be spending 50 or $100,000. In fact, we wouldn't get that from the trade-in of the old cruisers that are sold, that sale. Generally, you know, that's just not what takes place.
Very well, thank you.
Okay, I might remind everyone again to please address the questions to the moderator. No more questions. The Finance Committee have a recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen recommends approval of Article 8.
We're in a debate section. If you're in favor, use the microphone to your right. If you're opposed, use the microphone to your left. Seeing no one, queued up, we will now vote. On Article 9, 8. Article 8. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Passes unanimously. Now we're in Article 9.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we waive the reading of Article 9.
Motion to waive the reading of Article 9. All those in favor, please raise your tickets. All those opposed, super majority.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm going to ask John Souza, who's our Finance Director, Treasurer Collector. John basically chaired the capital planning process, so I'm going to ask John to present on this article.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. You'll see by the slide before us that these are all the folks that serve on the Capital Planning Committee. We have Janet Askenberg representing the School Committee, Dennis Bach, a citizen member. Carmen Cristiano is representing the Library Trustees. Also, John Morrison is also a citizen member. Myself, Roy Trebo represents the Finance Committee. And finally, Darlene Lucier is also a member, is Town Accountant. And I'm not going to, in the interest of time, I'm not going to go through and read the entire list of capital projects, but I, just to remind everyone, you can find the entire list on page 40 of the Finance Committee Warrant Book, and you can also find the entire town's capital plan on, in Section H of the Town Manager's Budget Book, which is the, which is the thick blue book that you had available this evening. The Capital Planning Committee received over 3.1 million in requests this past year, and the recommended budget of 2.9 million includes 1.5 million for school facilities and education technology, as well as 1.3 million for general government capital needs. Okay. And then just to go through the slides with you, we have, oops, I just wanted, oops, sorry, went too fast. We have for information technology, 235,000, 152,000 for public safety, which includes an automated license plate readers and digital radio upgrade for the fire department. Also for public works, 825,000 for infrastructure, which is basically drainage, roadway, sidewalk improvements that we usually fund, and also vehicle replacements to keep several of the divisions updated in public works. Also going forward, 165,000 for general government facilities, which includes our library, the air handling controller upgrade at Adams Library, and also as part of our Green Communities designation, the replacement of three vehicles with hybrids for $100,000. And then moving on to the schools, 993,000 will fund a variety of school facility improvements, which includes locker and team room renovations at several of the secondary schools, as well as gymnasium renovations at Parker, and the high, and the middle school and the high And then 553,000 for technology needs with the Chelmsford Public Schools. So the recommended capital budget totals 2.92 million. This is a little bit above prior years. I would point out that we're applying 87,000, over, just over 87,000 of recaptured funds towards this. And for those that may be unaware, recaptured funds are unexpendited balances that remain from prior year capital projects that have been completed. And then also, we're applying a one-time state aid distribution of just over 310,000. So this reduces the total amount to be borrowed to just over 2.5 million. That concludes my presentation, Mr. Moderator, and we ask for your support.
Do we have any questions? Please queue up on the microphone at the right. Name and precinct.
Roland Van Lou, Precinct 6. I note on Slide 25, page 13 of the stapled sheets, that there are three vehicles that total a value of $385,000. That's substantial, so I'm just wondering, do we have odometer readings for those vehicles?
Yeah, for public works, I can give you the, I can give you the odometer readings for the three vehicles that we're going to be replacing with hybrids.
No, I'm talking about the Sander truck at $185,000.
Let me ask our Public Works Director, Jim Pearson, to address that.
Sorry, Mr. Moderator. I don't have an odometer reader for the trucks. I have their age, but unfortunately, no, I don't have an odometer reading with me tonight.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Please address them to the moderator.
Hello, Mr. Moderator. This is Andy Sillings, Precinct 7. Excuse my lack of knowledge on some of the financial items. I wondered how this $3 million is reflected in the budget that we passed. And is it?
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. Each year, we issue bonds and we borrow to fund the capital plan, so if you were to look in the Town Manager's Budget under the Debt Service area, you'll see that we, there are lines and they go by year of issuance, so that you would see the capital plan, the capital plan's included in there because we'll be paying debt service once we issue the bonds.
So there's an amount for debt service in the budget?
Yes.
And how much is that amount?
Right now, usually what we do, we do, we give you a projected amount because the town won't actually issue these bonds until late June. Excuse me for one moment. Yeah, if you look on page 63 of the Town Manager's Budget, about the third line from the bottom, you'll see, it says Improvements 2013, Projected Issuance, and the amount's about 80,977.
Okay, so that would be the, sort of the maximum that we, taxpayers will be hit by this.
And then in subsequent years, the debt service will continue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Bob Joyce, Precinct 1. Mr. Moderator, through you, I'd like to ask, the McCarthy Middle School appropriation for parking lot curbs and sidewalks, seems to me, I saw them do all that this year already. Is there?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, I can address, yeah, the, that came before the Capital Planning Committee last year, and those of you may remember, the speaker is correct, that was included as part of the FY '12 capital plan. I would point out that the original amount was for approximately 400,000, and basically at that time, it was very tight at that time. And our Facilities Director, Gary Persicetti, indicated that he could get a majority of the work done for, I believe, just under 300,000. However, he made it clear to the Capital Planning Committee that he would have to come back in FY '13 for subsequent appropriation, so that was understood at that time. So I think if any of you have gone by McCarthy, you've seen that a good amount of work has been done, but there is more to do. And he was, through some savings, he was able to reduce his initial request from 100,000 down to 70.
So is that the side that faces the police station? That side has been completed?
Yeah, I'm going to ask Gary Persicetti to address that.
Actually, if you drive into the McCarthy School and you take the right, like you're going in between where the cafeteria would be on your left, as soon as you make that turn, that entire part of the parking lot is strictly binder, where the rest of it all the way across is fully done.
Okay.
We did that on purpose, along with some landscaping that has to be done, and some work to some curbing on the other side, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
It, can someone elaborate on the high school money? It's almost a half a million dollars to do gym and stadium and lockers. That's half a million dollars, a lot of money.
Yes, that includes a new gym floor inside the gym, new bleachers. It also includes the nine team rooms that are within the school. All of those are original to 1972. The only thing that isn't is the gym floor was redone back, I believe, in 91. And they are large costs, but we will get another probably 20 to 25 years on the floor, and lockers we should be good and done with.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Kevin Porter, Precinct 7. I know in the past you've had a plan for the sidewalks. When you do the sidewalks, this year we have 220,000 coming up. What's the plan for where the sidewalks will be done for this coming?
Yeah, for that, I'm going to ask Jim Pearson, our DPW Director, to address that.
This summer, we plan to be working in three areas, relatively short area in Smith Street to connect the two projects, projects, excuse me, the streets of Summer, Bill Rickeren in Brook, and somewhere on Old Westford Road.
Okay, thank you.
Next question, please, address them to the moderator.
Brian Latina, Precinct 4. Mr. Moderator, I see we're buying two new automated license plate readers, and I have a two-part question. One is, I see we already have one, and I guess it reads your license plate if you're parked, and that must imply that there's a database being kept. Can, can, is that public information? Can we get a, can we get a database dump of the, of the data that comes out of these machines to see where people are and?
I'm going to ask Police Chief, Mr. Moderator, James Murphy, to address that.
Thank you. That is not public information. We capture, currently capture information via laptop computers, but that is all protected by privacy, so it's not available to the public.
So this is simply, it's a database that the Police Department would keep for some period of time on the cars that they pass?
It's actually maintained by the State Criminal History Board. Nothing is maintained, no hard copy is maintained within the Police Department. It comes into the cruiser laptop for the officer to view on the screen.
And the second part of my question, Mr. Moderator, is that obviously these devices will generate some amount of revenue for, for the town. Do we have an estimate? Certainly, we have some experience. Do we have an estimate of what these units will generate for the town?
We never do traffic enforcement for financial reasons. We do it for safety, but I can tell you in the, the officers can tell you that there's been numerous violations cited with this one ALPR that we do have. We received the one unit we have on a grant from the Executive Office of Public Safety. There were only eight across the state, and we were, I'd say, fortunate enough to receive one on a grant, but we have recaptured substantial money through the court fine system.
So the town does benefit financially to your good work on safety?
Yes, as our Town Accountant is nodding, yes. Doesn't come to the Police Department, it goes to the general fund.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jump into Precinct 1, same, same issue.
Ask me, please.
Oh, sorry. Regarding the automated license plate readers, was there any addressing of privacy concerns with regard to the purchase, prior to the purchase of the first unit? And what are the reasons besides, well, I mean, the safety issue is unclear to me. Were there two or three solid reasons why this, this equipment needed to be purchased?
Police Chief.
I think it's a valuable, a great tool for law enforcement, to identify vehicles that are on the road that shouldn't be on the road. It can also, just so people know, the information that's loaded by the Registry of Motor Vehicles is done in a 20, every 24 hours. There's information on, again, unregistered motor vehicles revoked for insurance. There's also information regarding wanted persons, so warrants on an individual, at least the owner of that vehicle. So they've been in use across the country since 2004. Really became popular based on some homeland security issues. So I think it's a, it's a great tool. It's additional safety and awareness for our, for our offices.
And regarding the privacy issues, were they addressed at all?
Certainly. Again, we, we have policies and procedures in place before these devices, again, for any information that an officer runs and receives information on license plate information, wanted person information. That information is handled in accordance with department procedure.
Ask me, please.
Hi, Dennis Sheehan, Precinct 4. Actually, I had another question, but since we're on the license plate readers, what, can you kind of elaborate on this? What are these things? Where are they? Is this something that just sits there and automatically just clicks off license plate numbers and sends them off somewhere?
There's actually a picture of one in the Budget Book. It's, there's two cameras, actually, that are mounted on the, on the trunk of the cruiser.
Okay, so the police cruiser mounted?
Yes, they're mounted on the trunk of the cruiser, and it doesn't actually give the information on the vehicle to the laptop inside for the officer to view, but what it does is identify to that officer that there's a violation on that plate number, and then the officer will, will type in the plate number and get the full information on the registered owner.
Okay, so they're part of the car, and they're part of a regular traffic stop, or they could be?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Second question would be regarding schools' technology, the 21st century classroom whiteboards. I'd like to have someone from the School Department tell me a little bit about these things, how many are out there? What is the actual percentage of usage, and what do these things do?
Thank you. 21st century classrooms made up of base-
Could you identify yourself, please?
Oh, sorry, Anne Marie Fiori, School Technology Director. 21st century classroom is, basically consists of three components, an interactive whiteboard, a ceiling-mounted projector, and a ceiling-mounted speaker system. What it does is it allows teachers to differentiate instruction and use the principles of universal design for learning, which we use in the School Department for curriculum. Did that answer your question?
Well, no, actually, maybe a little bit, but I guess the question is, are we just trying to put these everywhere? Are they actually being used, and what use are we really getting out of them?
They're used every day. I do a lot of walkthroughs of the school, and I see them in use every day. We are trying to outfit all the classrooms with them. We have probably 80 total right now, and the capital expenditure for this item funds about 13 classrooms per year.
So I guess the goal is to have every classroom have one of these?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Basically, yeah, it's probably, instead of chalkboards, is this what we want to use, right?
Right.
Okay.
That, yeah, that's correct.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are you a town meeting rep?
Yes, I am, Mr. Moderator. Precinct Laura Marrow, Precinct 2. I see that we have about $100,000 planned for drainage improvements. Is any of that scheduled for the North Chelmsford Center that floods every single time it rains, and we're putting all this work into the new town, the North Town Hall?
No, it is not. The North Chelmsford Center is state-owned. That, that drain system is owned and operated by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation.
So we're going to have all these people coming into town, but every single time we have a little bit of rain, that whole area washes out. Is that a public safety concern?
Well, it is, but we're aware of it, and they're aware of it, and when they fund the improvements, they'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Seeing none, as the Finance Committee have a recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen recommends approval of Article 9.
Okay, we're in a debate section now. If you're in favor of this article, please use the mic to your right. If you're against it, please use the mic to your left.
You see any problems with that as an amendment?
Seeing no one queued up for debate, we will take a vote. And this requires a two-thirds majority.
Mr. Speaker, I'm preparing an amendment. I'm sorry.
We're having an amendment being prepared.
And to do, so we would take that. We would remove, we would reduce the amounts by those two minutes. I'm going to just add to this. Amendment's a majority.
Mr. Luder, are we in the-
Point of order, Mr. Moderator.
Close, no?
Point of order.
Yes.
Question to the moderator. Is it the correct procedure if an individual wishes to make an amendment, to first make his wishes known to the body and then present to you for review? Is that correct?
You can go to Town Council, since it must be approved by Town Council, and then I get it, and I'll read it to you, which is what I'm going to do right now.
Okay, thank you.
Amendment to Article 9. Remove appropriation of $180,000 for Sander truck replacement from the article, and remove appropriation of $160,000 for six-wheel truck, cab, and chassis from the article, and reduce the amount to be borrowed by $340,000 by Roland Van Lou, Precinct?
6.
Precinct 6. Could you please explain the article? The motion.
The motion. The town manager's comments that the annual tax levy increase is within the Proposition 2.5 limit are well taken. However, it's worth pointing out that the residential property tax is going up more than that, and has gone up more than that every year, in recent years, so that the, the rate of increase for homeowners is much greater than that. Next, in fiscal year 2013, for instance, it's 3.7 percent. So cost containment is important, and if you recall, this winter, I don't, I don't recall a lot of usage for the, the snow removal and sanding equipment, et cetera. And, you know, I know that the replacement of vehicles is a highly necessary function, and with all due respect, it's somewhat arbitrary when these things get replaced. See, these plans were probably put in motion during or before the winter season, I don't really know, but it's obvious that truck did not get a lot of use this year, and I would like to see it removed from the budget.
Do we have any comment? If you're in favor, you use the microphone to the right. If you're against this amendment, use the microphone to your left.
I have a question. Karen DiNato, Precinct 8. Paul, if these items are-
Through the, through the moderator.
Mr. Moderator, if these items are removed from the budget, from the capital budget, what's the impact on the operating budget, which I believe is what we're referring to regarding the tax increase, if that's correct?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Basically, you're talking $340,000 for those two articles. Those will be borrowed over a 10-year period, so you just take the $340,000 divided by 10, that's probably $34,000, probably plus some interest. You're probably talking somewhere in the low $40,000 for cost on, on a tax levy of almost $80 million. So I don't think, I don't think the, the, in fact, that would be rounding within a penny. In fact, you may not have any impact on the actual tax levy because of the rounding of the penny on the tax rate. So in essence, it would have no material impact on the tax levy.
And that's true, because this is a capital budget, which is outside the operating budget.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, yes, because we borrow this, it goes through the budget, but it's borrowed over a 10-year period, so that's why there wouldn't really be any significant tax relief.
Next.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, Glenn Thorne, Precinct 5. I assume that any item that's on the replacement budget for capital has been evaluated for its need to be replaced. Now, yes, we didn't have much snow this last winter, but I seem to remember a year ago, we had a lot of snow. And if I look at the ages of these vehicles, excuse me, I, I believe they've been around for quite a few snowstorms in Chelmsford. So what I'd like to know through you, Mr. Moderator, to anyone who can answer this question, is how are the vehicles selected that end up on this list? Who looks at them? Who determines their operating condition? Who determines when they ought to be replaced? Just so that I can feel comfortable whether or not to support removing a couple of vehicles because it didn't snow this year.
A multi-part question, Glenn. I ultimately decide-
I might ask you, Mr. Public Works Director, not to use names.
Oh, I'm sorry. I ultimately decide what gets submitted to the Capital Plan Committee, but on the advice of Highway Superintendent and the mechanics crew. I will note that this is not a, a request for this year. This is a five-year capital plan, and these projects advance in the queue in five years, and we, we take our vehicle list, look at when we bought it, when we hope to replace it if the capital funds are there. So again, the fact that we had, we did have a heavy winter last year, we had a relatively light snow winter, we still sanded quite a few times, we had less than, less than, much less than average snowfall. But this is a multi-year process, and these two vehicles came due this year.
So the, just, Mr. Moderator, the question would be, is this just a cycling through the vehicle over a given number of years, or is the functioning of the vehicle in jeopardy?
Mr. Moderator, it's both. Certainly, as the vehicles, one's a 2001, and one's a 1998, so one vehicle would be 15 years old next year. And just, like your own vehicle at home, it's, after a while, it's, it's more expensive to maintain it. And just, this is, even though we're the Public Works, we have an arm in the public safety to get out there and treat and clear the roads in, in the wintertime. And these roads, excuse me, these, these vehicles also, even though called a Sander, they're used in different parts of the year for, for different things as well.
Mr. Speaker, Roland Van Louw, Precinct 6. The amount of debt should not be viewed as an amount that can just automatically be recycled without cost. The town is paying $3 million a year in interest. You might as well burn that money. At some point, you have to do something to reduce your debt, and if $340,000 is considering, considered a piddling amount by some of the people in this room, it is not considered a piddling amount by me. The second point I would like to make is that I drive a 1999 Mazda 626. It has 37,000 miles on it. That's not a lot of miles, so therefore, I keep driving it. I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, through you, Maria Carafellis, Precinct 2. I'd like to ask, are these vehicles, would these vehicles pass inspection, a motor vehicle inspection, as of today, if you wanted to put them back on the road?
Yes, they are currently properly-
Inspected, so they, they wouldn't, they would not be a danger. They would not, they would not be a public safety danger.
Correct.
But my question is, through you, Moderator, on an average, the Sander truck, how many miles do you put on that in a year? Are we talking-
How much, how much is it going to snow?
I know, I'm saying like maybe 20,000, 30,000, 40,000.
Oh, boy.
Even if it's 15, and, and they're going to be 15 years old.
Maybe I can possibly answer it this way. There are roughly 230 miles of roads in town. There are roughly-
Okay.
There were nine Sander routes, so rounded up to 10 each.
Okay.
For Sanders covering 24, excuse me, 22, 3 times 2 is 46 lane miles. You, you treat them more than once a storm.
Okay.
You treat them when they're on storms, when there's black ice, so it's-
So they've, they've outlived their usefulness at this point, then?
We think so.
Okay. And on the six-wheel truck and cab chassis, the current vehicle we have is a, a current vehicle we're replacing is 11 years old, correct? So, okay. And I would assume that that equipment also has extensive mileage on it?
Those have more than the, the Sander in, in the trucks, because they're used every day.
Okay.
Year-round.
Okay, great. Thank you, sir.
Are you far against the article? If you're against it, you're at the right microphone. The motion, the amendment?
I'm, I'm against it.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, through, through you to the, to the speakers, question is, these are classified as heavy-duty, high-duty vehicles, correct?
Yes, yes.
And through you to the, to the previous speaker, do you have any anecdotal data on what the, what the standard lifespan for these vehicles are? Can you speak to as to whether or not these are, this is an out-of-line request, or if it falls in line with previous capital requests?
These are typical. We, generally about 12 years.
So we're not, we're not asking for anything that's underused, underused or anything else like that?
No, this has been our practice for at least my 28 years, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, question to the DPW Director regarding large trucks or vehicles. Being in the logistics business, I, I understand that you normally would measure vehicles by the number of hours they're actually running. An engine has a certain number of hours before you replace it. A truck must have a certain number of hours. Can, can town meeting be given hours instead of years? It's not relevant to a large truck, I don't think.
I've certainly made notes of that. Next, next time, for odometer reason, you're right. I think there are hourly, hour meters in the cabs as well. We'll, we'll make note of that for next time.
Thank you. And, and the second question, for town meetings purposes, I see a 10-year-old truck, arguably $16,000 a year before we do insurance, maintenance, gas, fuel, whatever it uses. We must get some residual value. You must sell these things to someone that, that pays us back, so we don't want the truck to be a heap of, of rust at the end of its lifetime. Is that a reasonable, do, do we get some amount of money back, or core value, if you will, on these vehicles?
Yes, we do. We go, we have an auction just about yearly now, that Paul's been pushing to, not only my department, but others. Whenever we have a new vehicle, we have to unload a vehicle, and we go to auction. Excuse me, it's a sealed bid, actually, and there is some residual value. It's not a lot.
It's not a lot.
A couple thousand dollars, maybe.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation on this amendment?
Point of order?
Yes.
Is it going to be our practice to go to the, to the different boards on amendments, or is that strictly on the questions?
An amendment of this nature-
We've been kind of inconsistent about it tonight, so I'm just asking, is there a guideline?
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. I apologize, I was helping this gentleman with a, with an amendment. Do I understand your question as to, is whether amendments have to first go to the appropriate board for approval?
For recommendation, yes, no recommendation?
Yes. There's no legal requirement for that? If the, if the board, obviously, you can anticipate, the amendment is within the scope of the, of the main motion that's on the floor, so to, and to the extent that the boards have an opinion, they can certainly give that as part of their recommendation. But there's no legal requirement that these kinds of motions be presented to the boards before town meeting.
Then my question is to the moderator, do you have a guideline that you're applying for making this decision on whether you go to the boards for that or not?
Well, this concerns a significant amount of money, which is why I would go to the Finance Committee, and Board of Selectmen.
Thank you.
Okay, this, and this does require, because we don't have it ahead of time, a brief polling of the committee, but we have just done so, and unanimously, the Finance Committee recommends against the, the motion.
Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen have no recommendation on this motion.
Okay. We are now going to put this to a vote, and the amendment to Article 9, remove appropriation of $180,000 for Sander truck replacement from the article, and remove appropriation of $160,000 for a six-wheel truck, cab, and chassis from the article, and to reduce the amount to be borrowed by $340,000. That is the amendment. If you're in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. If you're against the amendment, please raise your hand. Significant majority against. Amendment fails. We are now back to the main motion. The main motion moves that the town appropriate $2,926,331 for the following capital projects. All of those in favor of the capital budget, please raise your tickets. All of those opposed requires a two-thirds, and we have that was nearly unanimous. And now we come to Article 10, and I don't believe our electronic voting is up and running.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I'd like to make a, a motion.
Go ahead.
I believe it's in order. Given the, given the nature and the seriousness of this vote, and the fact that the electronic system is not working, and I believe there was an expectation that it would be, I'm asking that this article be table for consideration until Thursday evening to allow time for the system to be recorded, and if that system is not functioning at that time, to have the vote recorded by roll call vote.
You need 40 reps for a roll call vote, and you would have to do it at that time.
That was under the advice of counsel, so I'll defer to his input there.
Yes. So I will accept the part that says we can move to postpone consideration. As far as the roll call vote, you'll have to make it at that time if this is approved.
Understood.
Does anyone want to speak in favor of this or against it?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to just raise a concern. I don't believe, I'm not sure that our, I'm just checking with our, our architect engineer on this project. Presently, he would not be available to be here on Thursday evening if, if this article is tabled.
Okay, we have the motion. Given the instance of Article 10 to the future of the town, I move that a, I move that the motion be postponed until Thursday evening to allow the electronic voting system to be repaired and record the votes of the members accurately. And if the electronic voting system is not repaired by Thursday evening, and this part will have to be set aside, have a roll call vote, because that takes 40 reps. Yes?
Can I second this motion?
Yeah, we don't need seconds.
Okay, so.
If you want to speak in favors-
Can I speak in favor? Yes. Then we move it to Thursday?
Okay, that's, that's your in favor?
Yes.
Anyone to speak against? Motion to postpone this till Thursday, Article 10. All those in favor, please raise your tickets. Opposed, please raise your tickets. Amendment is defeated.
John, John.
Now, we will go to Article 10. Even though the electronic system is not working right now, I just want to go over a couple of things. Only reps are allowed to ask questions of the presenter. Anybody, any resident can enter into the debate. Again, the favorite, if you favor the, the amendment on that side, if you're against it, on that side. But only reps can vote, and only reps can move the question. Article 10.
Wave the reading? John, John, you want to wave the reading? You want to wave the reading, John?
Move that we waive the reading of Article 10.
Motion made to waive the reading of Article 10. All those in favor? Opposed? Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. At this point in time, I'd like to call to the microphone to make the presentation, Pat Maloney, who's the Chair of the Permanent Building Committee. Many may recall who were in this room six months ago, at the end of his presentation, at the beginning of the meeting, much like tonight, he presented information regarding the conceptual notion that we'd be looking adjacent to the town halls to build a fire station, following the defeat of the two previous votes to construct a fire station at Wilson and Chelmsford Street. And I guess my final remark is, regardless of whether one is favor or against this article, I think it's appropriate to recognize the volunteer efforts of, of Pat Maloney, Dave Dwayne, and the other volunteer members of the Permanent Building Committee, for the efforts that they've made, not only during the past six months, but for the past several years, in order to address this important community situation.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Patrick Maloney, co-chairman of the Permanent Building Committee. We've shortened up the presentation quite a bit tonight, because we feel like everybody probably saw the various presentations we've done over the past month or two, so, but we can certainly go back with any questions and pull up various slides from many of the presentations, I believe, so, but we're going to do a condensed version here this evening, so. Just a bit about how this, how the Fire Department operates. The central station is needed to support the outlying four stations. You've heard me talk in the past about the location study completed back in 2007 that suggested that we needed to stay with a five-station configuration. So the central headquarters is, is- So the central headquarters is necessary for that configuration to support the four outlying stations by housing numerous pieces of equipment that need to be centrally located so that they can respond accordingly. We have some complicated issues in town as far as being separated by two major highways. You know, all of this just seems to support the notion that we do need the central fire station to support those outlying stations. Quick bit piece about some of the things we've looked at in the past. There's been a lot of talk about renovating the existing site. I think we've gone over that numerous times. Top right picture is... Shows the lot size over there, and we really don't have the room to add on or alterate that building, as well as inadequate apron areas proposing a unsafe condition. Building has exceeded its useful life, where we are on borrowed time, and the structural slab continues to deteriorate. I'm going to turn it over to Jeff Alberti from Weston and Sampson HKT Architects. He's going to go through the programming and give you a look at the building and the costs, and we'll be back.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jeff Alberti from Weston and Sampson HKT Architects. What I wanted to start with was just a brief summary of the work that's been completed to date. It began with the programming process back in 2008 and included observing the current deficiencies, interviewing staff, incorporating NFPA and industry standards into the needs assessment. The programming process has been ongoing since 2008, and recognizing that space means money, we have worked closely with the Permanent Building Committee and the Fire Department to refine the space needs assessment, down to approximately 19,500 square feet, as you can see on the screen in front of you. This represents a 28% reduction from the initial space needs assessment. I do want to point out that the refined program contains all of the essential programmed spaces to meet the current and future needs of the department. Using this information, we prepared a conceptual design for the site, the 50 Bilrika Road site, which is adjacent to the existing town offices. This slide here represents an aerial view of the site. You can see the existing town offices in the bottom center of your screen. Chelmsford Street is the upper left, and Bilrika Road is running from the bottom left up to the right. So with that program, the 19,500-square-foot program that I mentioned, we began developing a concept that consisted of 16,000 square feet of new building, and that's shown in the shaded yellow area, and also 3,400 square feet of renovated space within Town Hall. This space is available due to the DPW preparing to move to the Alpha Road property, which is in the process of being completed. It's important to note that what makes this project cost-effective is the reuse of that existing space within the town offices. Town offices are in great condition, and therefore the renovations that are required are considered minor. The building will displace some parking in the front of the facility. However, you'll see just below the red area, we do have adequate parking for daily activities to be conducted within the existing facility. All the existing doors that are currently used to access the town offices will be maintained. And in the rear of the facility, you can see in the upper right, we have proposed new parking. This new parking will be for employees that will be working out of the town offices and the Fire Department, as well as an area for overflow parking for meetings, night meetings, and for voting. You can see here by the red arrow, we do have one small connector piece making the two spaces viable, and we minimize this connection piece to really reduce the cost. By having just that small connection piece, we're able to minimize renovations to the existing facility. We also proposing some new traffic signals associated with the Fire Department operations. And you can see in the bottom right, we've also identified a crosswalk, which was some feedback that we received from the Butters with the construction of these new signals to look into possibly providing this crosswalk. This is a view of the facility, just to kind of walk you through briefly the floor plan. This is the existing town offices, and Bilrika Road will be running across the bottom of the screen. And this is the lower level. This is a multi-story structure, because if you've been to the town offices out back, it slopes off dramatically. And so what we're proposing on the back level, which we're referring to as the ground level, is a basic accessible entry into the facility. This consists of a corridor and elevator. It's important to note that this new elevator will actually make the facility completely accessible for the town offices. As you move up one level to the lower level, we have the Fire Department Administration, which is approximately 3,400 square feet, highlighted in red, and we have fire prevention, as well as some shared Fire Department training space, which could also be used for public meeting space. In order to provide the connection to the existing facility, we've provided secured access just for the firefighters, so they can quickly exit their training room and enter the apparatus bay and respond to the needs of the community. The next level, the street level, which is the Bilrika Road level, includes two operational spaces. In this case, we have the operations support space, which is the center portion, as well as the apparatus bays that are on the right. This space does house the first responder equipment and the specialty equipment that is needed to support the outlying stations, as Mr. Maloney indicated to you earlier. Some of those specialty equipment include the Quint, the ladder truck, as well as the special operations trailer and hazmat trailer, ice rescue sled, and rescue boat, just to name a few. So their central location is critical, so that they can respond to the needs of the community. The operations space includes your basic NFPA-required spaces, such as the dispatch, which is a backup dispatch, shift commander office, dayroom, kitchen area, turnout gear, wash equipment, as well as self-contained breathing apparatus, filling station. As we move to the final level, which is the upper level, this also includes some NFPA-required spaces, including the sleeping areas for the staff, for the firefighters, as well as the basic locker shower toilet facilities that they currently lack. This is a conceptual rendering of the facility. The town offices are on the left-hand side, and you'll note that the building itself has been lowered on the right-hand side where the apparatus bays are. This is to accommodate access, but also to ensure that the town offices remain the primary structure on the site. And overall, the aesthetics of the building would be done in a manner to match the existing town offices. This is a copy of the conceptual cost estimate that was prepared for this project. Through this process, we spent quite a bit of time looking at the concepts that were done and actually prepared a 60-page cost estimate, so we could really flush out all of the components. So the first component in the upper part is the new building construction. That's the 16,000-square-feet construction. This includes all of the costs associated with the building superstructure, the substructure, as well as the building fit-out. The renovation costs just below that are your basic office upgrades, some new walls, some ceilings, some flooring for the renovations. And then we have the site development costs. These site development costs include all of the paving, grading, and drainings associated with this project, as well as the excavation. As I mentioned, we're going to be lowering the site in some areas, so we've accounted for that excavation, and any retaining walls associated with that excavation. And also includes the new traffic signal associated with the project. We have a line item, which is the design contingencies, and that's for some unknowns, because we're in the early phase of the project, that as we continue to develop the project, if anything is identified, it'll come from the design contingencies. And then finally, we have our soft costs, which include your designers' fees, owner's project manager fees, construction contingencies, permitting, and testing. So the subtotal... Or the total cost is $7,766,000 and change. So at this point, I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Maloney to close out the presentation.
Thanks, Jeff. So this is where we are after five years. I'll speak about the benefits of this proposal. This proposal meets the criteria set forth in the 2007 location study, in that it's in close proximity to the current headquarters station. It allows for renovation and reuse of the existing unused space in the town offices, which will be vacated when DPW moves out and moves down to Alpha Road. The area out back that's inhabited by recycling right now would also move down to Alpha Road. We'd have shared Fire Department and community space, in that the training room, when not in use in the evening by the Fire Department, can be used by town offices, and there is a need for additional meeting space within town offices currently. The site is town-owned, no site acquisition costs. It's part of an 8.69-acre site. Additional parking provided in the back of the town offices. The plan works that the town employees would park out back. This plan also allows for full accessibility to the entire building now through a new elevator and so on. Improvements to the town-owned property. This would clean up the area out back by putting in parking that can be used by all the different entities that use that rare area, be it Little League softball, employees, town meetings, that type of thing. And construction costs are still low, but they are going up, and we expect them to start to escalate back to more normal levels starting this year. So we've worked a long time on it. I'll say it again, as I've said before, there is no perfect site. This was the latest proposal that we came up with after failing Chelmsford and Wilson Street for two years in a row. It's been a goal of the Board of Selectmen for several years now to get something done, so that's what's kept us going in looking at various proposals. So with that, we put this proposal before you, and we'll entertain questions.
Are there any questions? Please direct them to me.
Mr. Moderator, this is Andy Sillenge, Precinct 7. In reading this article, I wish to establish whether the article that we vote on has any direct connection with the design, with that design? Or does it only specify the money, and the design could change?
Mr. Moderator, through you to the Speaker. We have a complete estimate for this entire project on the town website. We have vetted it, and while what you're seeing is somewhat conceptual in nature, the real meat of the project is identified in the estimate. So to go any further than this with design and so on is kind of prohibited by funding, but, you know, special consideration was given to the site work, cutting into the hill, those types of things, and it's all spelled out in the estimate that's on the town website. We have a much higher level view with the budget here, but I think we can talk specifics if you needed to get into that.
I'm not questioning the quality and the detail of the design. I'm questioning whether, in fact, when we vote, do we vote for a design, or can somebody later change it and said, "I want to make it bigger, I want to make it... Truck's going out the back way."
The process here would be that we would go out and we'd need to hire... First of all, we need to hire an owner's project manager, if we were successful this evening, for the funding. That owner's project manager, we need to pick up by state law. We would then go hire a designer. The designer would come in. We have the current design, the concept, as you can see. Yeah. But that's not to say that at the end of the day, it ends up perfectly looking like that. What we would be looking at is to try to meet more of the aesthetic of the existing Town Hall, so to say that, you know, we'd go in and make it bigger. If that's a question, that we would attempt to make it bigger. We're working with approximately 15,000-plus square feet of new construction and 3,400 square feet of renovated construction. We have a budget of $7.8 million. We would not be going back to the well, so I don't see how you could make a building larger or change it so dramatically that you didn't pay your budget, in which case...
Mr. Moderator, I'm really interested in legal counsel saying what it is legally we're voting for and what can be changed afterwards.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. Town meeting is voting on a fire station? You're voting on a site? You're voting on the funding source, which is borrowing? And you're voting on an appropriation that cannot exceed... The cost cannot exceed $7.8 million?
Thank you.
Dennis Sheehan, Precinct 4. At the last town meeting, there was a proposal for the same site where the fire station was built into the back of the hill. What happened to that proposal? How did we get to hear from there?
We started looking at that much closer, because initially, we thought that that might be a viable spot. But when we really started to look at the logistics of that area, it would have required a designated road out the back of what would have been the fire station over, maybe behind the yellow box there. But it would have been a designated road that would have had to go out. And then we said, okay, it's a designated road. We need to keep the general public out of that road, because, God forbid, somebody comes in and blocks that road when there's an emergency, and these guys are trying to get out. So then we said, well, let's put automated gates at the end of the driveway to make sure nobody can come into that dedicated road. And it just got more complicated and more complicated, and it seemed like public safety was going to be an issue, as well as public safety of the people on those grounds, as well as public safety of the general community with trying to get these guys out to an event, if you will.
Okay, so basically, somewhere along the line between the last town meeting and this town meeting, proposal changed from the back to the front. Any particular time in question? I don't know. I don't know when that happened.
I think we started talking about it... Of course, we were working on it in the fall when we came to town meeting, and we were just starting to look at that. It became readily apparent pretty quickly, within 30 to 60 days. So I'm sure by the end of the year, we started to turn around and say, you know, what else can we look at? And we started looking at the upper-level lot, and started working towards something on that.
And the only egress from this particular fire station is out the front door, right on Bilrika Street?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Maria Carafellis, Precinct 2. I have a question about the lights. I was under the understanding... I was under the understanding that we would possibly use the lights that we currently have in front of the fire station, and could we possibly use the same signage and just move it over to the new and use the lighting, the streetlights, the yellow lights?
I don't know that we can reuse any traffic sig... Is it just traffic signals you're talking about?
Traffic signals is what I'm talking about.
I don't know that we can really reuse any traffic signals from over on North Road. Couple of reasons. One, I believe they also serve Academy Street. But the second reason is we'd like to do something a little bit... If this were to go forward, you'd like to do something that's a little bit more subdued in lighting, much like the lights you might see at North Road in Dalton.
Right. Okay, great. Thank you.
Question?
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator, my legs have been sitting still too long. I have a question on...
Name and precinct?
Ralph Hickey, Precinct 1.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to know if they have changed the plans the last time I talked about it. The gym was not accessible with the rest of the building. And under the Americans with Disabilities Act, this amount of money, the entire building has to be fully accessible, and it's considered as one building, not two. And there was a question on the switchback ramp up on the top right-hand corner. It was not completed. I want to know what the story is on that. Where does that go to? It doesn't say that in the plan.
We don't have a firm design at this point for that ramp. What we've acknowledged is that we would be putting in a new ramp to get you up to the level where you see at the bottom of the stairs there, where you basically go up now to enter into... To vote at the gym or anything like that. So the ramp would... It would be handicapped accessible, meeting all the ADA standards for the ramp to get you up to that gym level. And then once you're in there, you can access either the fire station or the rest of the building from there.
Does everybody use the switchback ramp? Is there an elevator up to that height?
We have not allowed for a wheelchair lift or anything like that at this point, but, you know, if budget allowed, we could certainly look at something like that. But, you know, the ramp would be designed to all the current ADA standards, so...
In the gymnasium down there now, which is used for selling books and stuff like that, that's not accessible to the rest of the building. How do we get from that section to the rest of the building?
Well, you'd have a ramp that would come up to the door that you see at the top of the current switchback ramp. And again, that's a concept...
That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the... I'm talking about the gym downstairs in the old town hall, all right?
Yep.
Right there. How do you get up to the other floors?
You go out, you go out the door for the gym and you go into the yellow space and you jump on that elevator there and you go up to the next floor and then you're back into the main town hall.
That's not an acceptable solution.
Excuse me?
That is not an acceptable solution.
Excuse me. You cannot debate the President.
I'm sorry.
Okay? I can ask him questions and then you can during debate bring those points up.
My question is, that building has to be accessible and it has to be, everybody has an equal path of travel. If I can get up from the inside, everybody else has to get up from the inside.
With all due respect, that's a good point, but that's not a question. Save it for debate.
I think if the question is, is do we have inside access, complete inside ADA access, the answer is yes, we do. That is all enclosed there, so you'd have this point of ADA access to get into the building, and you'd also have the elevator up on the main level of town offices to access the building. So you'd have two points of ADA accessibility because it's all enclosed. You would, now, the ramp, you know, is not enclosed, but if that's the question, the ramp is not enclosed and there's no cover on the ramp.
Okay, I guess I'll have to get a better look at the plans, thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Brian Latina, Precinct 4. Mr. Moderator, at the last town meeting, we saw a nice design from the back that was below the, I'd argue, the sandhill, and now I see we've dropped some level down on the sandhill.
And what's the question?
I'm wondering if we've done some kind of drillings into that subsurface.
We've not done any geotechnical testing or drilling at this point.
And in a 50-year plan, would this, I mean, the architect must have looked at it, would the architect think that this hill will be as stable as the current location, which is sinking in the back after a 50-year timeframe?
We've looked at, we've looked at the hill and we've taken into consideration the fact that we'd be cutting into the hill. Over where the five bays would be, that hill is going to be a lot smaller than one may think because we're going to be dropping that elevation where the bays are approximately five feet to get down to street level. So that hill becomes much, much less and we're back down to what is probably more virgin earth, if you will, and the rest of the building would be excavated down to virgin earth. So there'd be no difference whatsoever in this building or any other building. We would have to meet all building codes, structural rigidities and things like that, so, I mean, we'd be under Massachusetts State Code to make sure that it was structurally sound.
So the $7.8 million has piles driven in the front and back and that sort of thing? Or is it assumed by the architect's design today that it's laid on a level concrete? And part of my question is around the former police station and the discovery after town meeting voted that we had ledge under there. Maybe we'll get the benefit of ledge here, but my concern is, did they or did they not assume a flat surface versus a pylon type of a design at this point with 7.8 million as the key?
Where we're at right now is that we carry enough contingency to make sure that any which way it would have to go, that we'd be able to do that. So, we have a design contingency as well as a construction contingency, and unfortunately, we just haven't had the funding to go do all kinds of testing up front to see where that would lay out, but we have no real qualms with the site. We believe that the site will be certainly adequate. We, again, meeting all the building codes, we have to be down below frost levels and all those types of things, so...
For 50 years?
I would, everything that we've done in the past 10, 12 years that I have been involved, the schools and so on, everything has been projected out to last us 50 years. It seems to be the mantra of the committee.
Thank you. Next question.
Tom Moran, Precinct 8. I have two questions. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to find out if the town manager received or was aware of an email from a representative of the late Dr. Curry's family that the lot on North Road was available at a very reasonable price?
I can answer that. We did, we all received an email to that effect that they were willing to reduce the price on that property, and I talked to firefighter Houle about this, and we were approached, the committee was approached, and the price might have been dropped to something like four, $450,000. We had that property appraised back a couple of years ago and it appraised at about $650,000, but it would still be a purchase and it didn't lend itself to the proper size for what we were looking for, for our new central fire headquarters.
I'm not sure I got the answer to my question. I said the price I thought was significantly reduced from what Dr. Curry originally wanted for the property. Was the town manager aware of an email that that property...
The town manager says yes.
Okay. The second question I have is approximately, what's the cost of excavating the proposed site that we have on the screen?
We've carried for all of the site work, we've carried, I believe it's $468,000, and then we, and that's just to work with the site conditions. Then we also have another site work line item within the construction for things like curbing and paving and so on. So, if you look at the, the $684,000 is to take care of all the cutting into the hill, it's to take care of any stormwater systems. We are close to wetlands on this site, site clearing, excavation, you know, anything we might have to bring in as far as structural fill, water supply, electrical fencing, gates, traffic signals.
So, looking at the screen, should I assume the answer is that the renovation of town offices because of that and the site development cost is about $1,100,000?
Say that again? No, say that again, please.
The two numbers are $1.1 million, the renovations of the town offices.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, sure. You could assume that.
You don't have site development costs in that way.
You're right.
Okay. Next.
Thank you.
Ruth Monahan, Precinct 3. I just have a question. Is there any possibility that the administrative offices could be cited in the town hall through you to the appropriate person? Could be cited in the town hall, but that the actual rest of the building, the new building part, could be done at another site, for example, Chumsford and Wilson, for the similar price tag?
Yeah. I'm going to let Chief Cowan come up and answer that question.
Mr. Moderator, could I have that question repeated, please?
Yes, repeat the question, please.
Could the administrative offices be done in the renovated section of the town hall, but the actual new building be cited on the Wilson and Chumsford Street site, but at the similar price tag that we're looking at now?
You could, Mr. Moderator, you could put the administrative offices in the town hall and put the building somewhere else. Yes. But, but, should it be, if not connected to the building or in the building, I wouldn't suggest to remove it from the exact location, so...
Okay, it would decrease the efficiency that much?
I would, I would think...
Have it down the street?
What would you accomplish by doing that? I'm not sure.
Can I, through you?
You asked the question, and I think he answered that it could be.
Okay.
Do you have another question?
Well, he wanted, he just asked me why we would do it. And I said, "Price tag."
We can't cross-examine back and forth.
Mr. Moderator, it's a theoretical question. Of course the building could be renovated there and a new building built in the other thing. I think the question is, what's the functional realities of doing that? Of having the chief removed from the station and having the training room in the town hall and the fire station at the other end of the property? If that's the question, I think the fire chief can answer that, and I think you can imagine what the answer to that's going to be.
Beverly Barrett, Precinct 5. I've been in that area of town at 8:30 in the morning trying to get to Center School, and the traffic has pretty much stopped dead, and I'm wondering what the procedure is if there's a fire at 8:30 in the morning. How do you get the fire engines out? Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Much like it's handled today with a exit out of, many times North Road is backed up, many times Chumsford Street's backed up, any route heading out of the center, many times is backed up. What happens is they have a system as they're leaving the firehouse, they can make lights go green heading in the direction that they were leaving. So if they know that they're going to come out and take a left and head towards Golden Cove Road, they can hit the button in the truck and that light goes green and that starts to vacate the traffic such that that traffic's moving. Conversely, if they went right into the center, they would make that light go green and they would, they would move that traffic out of their way by the time they got there.
Thank you.
Kieran Deednado, Precinct 8. My question that I'd like you to ask the fire chief is, how important are drive-through bays? Because it doesn't look like this facility accommodates drive-throughs.
Well, I think, Mr. Moderator, I think the drive-through bays would be optimal, but, you know, we couldn't do it at this location.
Okay, and my, the other question is, does this site offer room for expansion if we were to bring the ambulance system in-house?
Right now, we're not looking at putting an ambulance in the building, no.
No, that's not the question. Does the site offer room for expansion?
The site does not offer room for expansion, no.
Okay, and the existing building would not accommodate ambulances?
Well, we're part, we have an 8.69 acre site here, so I guess depending on operational needs, I mean, you could always add something on the back. I mean, we have, we have a large site. You would never hear me say the word "expansion," having gotten, you know, a lot of reports to that over the past few years.
You're coming in under budget and on time on most of your projects. I can't say anymore.
Expansion became a bad word in our circles.
Would the Curry lot, is it big enough for...
The Curry lot's almost exactly an acre. We laid it out, we did studies on that lot, and by the time you put a 19,500-foot building, a bigger footprint than what we have here on that site, we were able to squeeze in 10 parking spaces and two handicap spaces, didn't fit the need, and it was compounded by Worthen Street in the backside and so on. It's just a too small a site.
Thank you.
And it's not town-owned, so it would cost us another...
Thank you. Next.
Mr. Moderator, Jerry Lo, Precinct 9. I'm just wanting to understand, if there are cost overruns, how are those handled?
Well, as we've had in the past under some of the committees I've worked with, we, when we were working on the $31 million high school budget, we had some mechanical bids that came in excessive to what we were budgeting at the time, so we went back, we looked at that and we tweaked things and we took our time and lost a few months out of the design schedule and so on, but we went back and we got a proper design that worked, came in within budget. We recently had the same thing happen on the town halls projects where we had to go back and tweak some things, so it's, you know, it's really, what we strive to do is not come back to the well. Through the school projects, town halls, the other projects we've worked on, we've not come back to the well for anything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Fall, Precinct 5. Going back to what the, one of the previous speakers from Precinct 5 mentioned about the traffic pattern, Mr. Moderator, I was wondering if you've given any thought to how that ladder truck would be swinging left onto, if it was heading out Route 27? Would you see any problem with that?
Yeah, I'm not sure I understand the question. You're talking about the intersection of where the satellite started now, at Chumsford and Bill Ricker Road?
Yes.
I wouldn't see a problem.
You don't see a problem with the truck taking a left and to head out Route 27 at all?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Nope.
Next.
Bob Joyce, Precinct 1. My first question, why are we handling this project in this way when normally, at least I remember back in the old days, when Dennis was in charge, oh, I'm sorry, when that man was in charge, that we would do the design engineering and maybe even bid it and then come back and appropriate the money for the actual building? There's a lot of things that, a lot of questions here, and I'd like to know why we don't handle it that way, I guess, Mr. Moderator.
I might have been a real pup back then, but in my recollection, I've never seen anything in government procurement go out any other different way, and you need to get the funding to go get designed. So, I mean, certainly, this body could offer something up and come back and say, "Okay, we need to appropriate the funding just for design," and then go ahead and, you know, try to get the project bid and see where you are, and then go back for another round of funding, but I think you would lose competitiveness in bidding and many types of things like that because, you know, people aren't going to want to bid with the possibility of it not being, not going forward and that type of thing. So, I think there's a lot of ways you could get hurt by doing something like that.
Another question I have is for the manager, and that's, do you think that you are going to have to take some land by eminent domain on Bill Ricker in order to widen that road? Because that road is somewhat narrow. I actually went up to the substation in, on Westford Street, Old Westford Road, and it seems much, much wider than Bill Ricker Road.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, the answer is no.
The answer is no.
Is that a guarantee?
The answer is no. Next.
Leonard Doolan, Precinct 7. Through you, Mr. Moderator. If we do not approve this project now, to anyone who can answer the question, what are the consequences? Where do we go from here?
Well, depending on what this body decided, I would say that if you weren't back at something relatively quickly, in all likelihood, the people that have been assisting us with our feasibility study for about four years now, Western and Sampson HKT Architects, I would think that they would move along and not invest any more time in it, and certainly there'd be probably a new committee and a new feasibility study that would be necessary to start to put something back together again.
What are the other implications?
Condition of the current station. It fails and we put them in quantic huts over on some field someplace.
Seeing no one else queued up for questions. I see one.
Mr. Moderator, Bill Griffin, Precinct 9, just to ask a clarifying question, asking about the implications. I appreciate the chairman's comments. I'd like to get a little bit of input from the chief as to the specifics of, let's, if the station were to close because things weren't voted down, what the impact would be to the apparatus that's there now in terms of its ability to be in service or not, and the ability of us to obtain future apparatus to cover the needs of the town.
Mr. Moderator, what would happen is the, if we have to vacate the building, and at some point we will, some of the equipment will have to actually be taken out of service because it doesn't fit anywhere else. We would also have to relocate the firefighters that are in the center now, they would have to go to some of the outlying stations, and those aren't adequate for more than two people, so...
So, we have, we have a couple of different trucks that are in there. Mr. Moderator, can, can we be a little more specific as to what trucks would be, eyed to be taken out of service and how would we get that coverage if we don't have it?
Mr. Moderator, the ladder would have to probably come out of service permanently until some structure was built that would house it because it doesn't fit anywhere else. So, the heavy rescue would have to be put somewhere that wouldn't be centrally located to respond to the highway that currently responds about 268 times last year, I believe, to Route 3 and 495 combined.
With the ladder truck being out of service, Mr. Moderator, last question, where would we get that service from and what would the average, what are the average response times when you do have to rely on someone else and possibly not at all?
It would be mutilated from the surrounding... It would be mutual aid from the surrounding communities, and depending on the location, that it'd be coming from the community and/or the location of the fire, it could be 10 minutes, could be 15 minutes, it's, it's very difficult to say. It, it would be a long time, let me put it that way.
Thank you. No more questions? I have a, we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen recommends approval of Article 10.
Okay, now we're going into the debate period, and any resident can debate. If you're in favor, please use that microphone, if you're against, use that microphone, and only the reps can vote, and only the reps can move the question from either microphone, and only the reps can make amendments. First one on the pro side.
Paul Erickson, Precinct Five, and I'm also in a butter to the cell station, and when I say in a butter, my house is 55 feet away from that station. I've lived in my house for approximately eight years, been in town all my life. I cannot honestly count one time in the eight years that I've lived there that I've said, wow, why did I move next to a fire station? Station was there, it was my choice, my family's choice to move there. They've been great neighbors, never hear anything. I understand that the station you're proposing is a five-bay station as opposed to a two-bay station. The size is considerably different, no taking away from that. However, the mission of the fire department is exactly the same, whether it's a two-bay station or a five-bay station. They're dispatched the same way, the firefighters respond out of the station the same way. Like I said, whether it's in the center, north, west, whatever, it's all the same. They're in a residential, every station in town is in a residential area, and the current station in the center at one time was a residential area. Like I said, the firefighters are most respectful to the neighbors, I don't hear any sirens, I don't hear any air horns, they pull out, when they get to the edge of the road, they turn their lights on, and they go the direction they have to go. It's, honestly, it's not a deterrent in any way, shape, or form. When I purchased my house, one of the questions I asked the bank when I purchased it, is there any depreciation on my house because it's budding a fire station? The answer was no. When I refinanced my house about four years ago, different bank, different appraise of everything, asked the same question, got the same results. Times might have changed, things might be a little different, I can understand that. One last point I'd like to say is, I was on the original feasibility study that looked for locations. We worked for the better part of two years, and our mission was just to find the correct location for the station. At the end of our two years, a majority of the committee recommended Wilson Street. Wilson Street failed twice for various reasons. This is probably, in my estimation, the next best thing we can do to provide a fire station for the firefighters and for the community that's going to last another 50 years. I urge you to vote yes in this article.
Before you leave, are you a rep?
Yes, I am. Precinct Five.
Okay, and your name?
Paul Erickson.
I assume you're speaking against it?
Yes, I'm against.
If you're not a rep, I need name and address.
Absolutely. My name is Matt Bessonin, I live at 55 Billerica Road, directly across the street from the town hall, and real quick two points to that. First, I want to make a note that he said where the old town hall, or the hall, the old fire station was, it used to be residential. It's not anymore. That's important. And now I should forget my second, so I'm going to go back to the points I planned. In the past few weeks, my family and our neighbors have all come together as a neighborhood. We've reached out to other precincts, other town reps, and more importantly, we went to the post office, we went out, we've handed out flyers, we've talked to people. We've reached out to places like the Westlands, communities that had to band together to, to protect their part of this community. And what we've come away with is two main points. First of all, this is general confusion. I know the people that do this for their living, and the town reps knew more, they do know more, but most people that we talk to, we've even heard some town reps here, show some confusion as to where the location was. So that's the first main piece. The second was that we need to be clear, concise, and not, not double up our points when we come up to town meeting, if we want our point to be heard. So in that view, I'm here to offer a quick summary, because we don't have a PowerPoint. Some of the things that people are going to, behind me are going to speak to, we are going to speak to traffic, we want to talk a little bit about the story of what's happened on Billerica Road, from Route Three all the way up to our neighborhood over the past 35 years. We're going to talk about the MMA study, we're going to touch upon the ballot as well from the voter's perspective, and this whole, from our standpoint, rushed expedited process. These are some of the things we're going to talk about. I personally, right here, for the group and the people behind me, I'm here to talk about the fact that we, obviously, we want a fire station. It's been clear, anyone that's been to these meetings now and before, everyone that comes up here says we are for a fire station, but this five-bay fire station does not fit in this residential area. It doesn't fit in ours, it doesn't fit in anybody's. We're here to protect our neighborhoods, and just like the Westlands, just like other places, we've come together as a neighborhood to ask that you stop this vote, and we, and just because this is a fire, the, the fire station, and not a cell tower or something smaller, it doesn't mean we should overlook the neighborhoods around.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Okay, next. One against?
My name is Joanne Bessonin, and I'm a 34-year resident of Billerica Road, at 55 Billerica Road. Of all the streets, the roads coming in and out of Chelmsford Center over the past 30-plus years, Billerica Road has been hit the hardest and has taken the brunt for the rest of the town's industrial growth. Maybe 30-plus years ago, confining industry to one area was, like the golden triangle, was a good idea, but we have watched each year as one by one the houses from Route Three to the cemetery have disappeared, and the large industrial, mortar, and brick buildings have crawled up the road in their place. What is left of our historic residential Billerica Road is just one half mile from the center to Golden Cove and handful of smaller homes beyond. The traffic in town has exploded mostly because of that industrialization. Not only have the homes disappeared, but because of this traffic, we have watched as one section after another of Billerica Road has already, have already been widened, and traffic lights have been added. The most recent widening was just, excuse me, down the street at Golden Cove Road, where a monster of an intersection was built by taking a large portion of the frontage from the historic town farm. If that five-bay fire station ends up next to the town hall in that parking lot, the same thing will happen here. Billerica Road cannot support the extra traffic the fire station would generate. The combined complex, and I'm calling it a complex, of the town hall and the five-bay fire station headquarters facility is as large as any one of those industrial buildings at the other end of the road. When traffic impact studies are finally done, this street will again be widened with lots more traffic lights and signs, just like the industrialized area down the street. The eventual widening of our road will lead to changing the small remaining neighborhood, uh, community to a commercial area. This is not in the best interests of our neighborhood or our town. It will be a great loss for our town history. And I was going to stop at this point, but I can't. I realized, as we all came into this room, we walked by a table that was selling books on the history of Chelmsford. He was stand, right now, spouting the pros and cons of building that project on Billerica Road in the parking lot of the town hall, and if it is passed in the near future, it will sound the death knell for a half a mile of some of the older homes in Chelmsford. There are, I, I don't have the exact number, because I don't have the paper in front of me, but there are at least 10 homes along that stretch of road, the majority of them centered near, near the town hall, that were built in the mid to late 1800s, and there are a couple who are, that are even older. These homes are already listed with both the Chelmsford and the Massachusetts Historical Commissions. I thought the purpose of our town was to protect our neighborhoods. I do think that this neighborhood of older homes needs your protection. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone that wishes to use the in-favor microphone? Next.
Jim Pender, Precinct One. I am a Precinct One rep, and this is in my precinct, but I'm not close to this firehouse. I mean, I, I am honestly speaking as a person who's opposed to this, because I don't think it really works. I mean, honestly, there's been so much focus on just about everything but the right thing. You know, we heard in a, in an editorial recently in the newspaper that this is the third try, you have to vote this in. That's not necessarily the case at all. There is a sense of urgency here, we do need to move on, on this at some point, but we need to do the right thing. Many people have said in 20 years, we don't want to look back at this decision and regret it, and I, I think we're, we're on the verge of doing that, if we, if we do approve this. I've examined the fire station documents that have been posted, the focus has been on just about everything, as I say, but, but the right thing. We've looked at cost estimates for the headquarters, code issues, conceptual costs, tax impacts, financing, debt service, et cetera, et cetera, even letters to the editor included there. A lot of selling has been taken place, but from a engineering perspective, I'm very concerned, we've designed the heck out of this thing, we know exactly how much roll of toilet paper's going to cost on floor three, but this isn't just any fire station. This isn't like any of the other four fire stations, or even the existing fire station. What they're proposing is different. It's going to be the main service for fire and vehicular emergencies, it will be busy at all times. And back to the question, is this the right place for the, for the new fire station? I believe the answer is no, and at least not at this point, not at this point in time, because based on my look at the, at the, at the studies, I haven't seen any modeling and simulation of, of the traffic in the area. I haven't seen a peer-reviewed traffic study that proves that this location is suitable for a station of this magnitude. I mean, let's choose a little bit of common sense here, how many of us have been stuck in traffic at that, in that area? Wilson, Summer, one, Billerica Road? It happens every day between like 7:30 and 9:00, or 4:00 to 6:00. I mean, the possibility for gridlock in the case of an emergency with a big truck or an emergency vehicle is extremely high, in my, in my opinion. And without those kinds of studies for us to, if, if we approve this, I mean, it's just gonna, it's gonna move ahead, period. The, if the station gets built, the first time there is gridlock, we've heard from the town manager that there's absolutely no way that this is going to be any taking of land. Well, wait, wait for the first problem to occur. By the end of that quarter, that road's going to be widened, and we'll be moving toward a situation where the residents are, you know, it's, it's taken out of a residential state and moved more toward commercial. My sole point is I believe this, this proposal is fairly flawed, because we're not sure that this location can meet the response times necessary for such an important station. I, I ask all town reps to vote no on Article 10. We're not ready to move ahead on this project. Thank you.
Now, was there anyone that wishes to speak in favor? Okay. Come forward. I will not ask that question again unless I see someone in front of the in-favor microphone. Go ahead.
Gloria Showen, Cyanide Circle. There are 51 units in Cyanide Circle, and we have a very small driveway out onto Wilson Street. We have trouble getting out, out of the driveway onto Wilson Street in the morning and in the evening. The traffic is absolutely bumper to bumper, I'm sure everyone's experienced, experienced that, and Wilson Street is an extremely narrow street. I don't care how many lights you put up there, there is no place, we can't pull over, there's no place for cars to pull over for a fire engine to go through, and then they're already bumper to bumper on Billerica Road. I also think it's absolutely unconscionable that you would even consider putting something, and don't tell me it's not going to be noisy and well-lit, next to senior housing. Thank you.
Are you in favor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chris Rose, Precinct Five. I'd like to ask a question of the moderator. Could we get a recounting of the non-binding measure vote from this past voting session for the town?
Say again?
I'd like to get a recounting, precinct by precinct, of the non, non-binding measure for the fire station. The ballot measure that was, that was passed?
Yeah, we'll get that for you. Okay. Advisory question. Precinct One. 324 yes. 302 no. 111 blanks. Precinct Two. 174 yes. 135 no. 95 blanks. Precinct Three. 218 yes. 226 no. 228 blanks. Precinct Four. 185 yes. 145 no. 141 blank. Precinct Five. 286 yes. 233 no. 108 blanks. Precinct Six. 291 yes. 258 no. 222 blanks. Precinct Seven. 377 yes. 337 no. 164 blanks. Precinct Eight. 263 yes. 238 no. 212 blanks. Precinct Nine. 350 yes. 288 no. 96 blanks. The grand total is 2468 yes, which is 41.1%, 2162 no, which is 36%, 1377 blank, which is 22.9%.
To my esteemed colleagues, our town has asked us to pass this measure. We should pass this measure.
Okay, someone against it?
Gloria McCarrick, 76 Billerica Road. I, like Mrs. Bessonin, am a longtime resident of the Billerica Road. I mention this to establish...
Funeral processions often travel down Billerica Road from one of the many churches in our center and the Blake Funeral Home to get to the two cemeteries located on River Neck Road. Finally, I would like to mention the recent town discussions regarding rezoning of Billerica Road near Route Three to allow for additional uses. Should this become a reality, it would also add to Billerica Road traffic. Impact, impact, impact. As you pondered this proposal, I ask that you keep the concerns of our neighborhood in mind. At the end of the day, when all of you have moved on, it will be the residents of Billerica Road and the surrounding neighborhood that will have to deal with the impact of this fire station forever. Thank you for allowing me to state my concerns.
Thank you. Could someone please lower the mic for next speaker?
Oh, well, then I'll stand far back. Good evening. Stephanie Bush, Precinct Two. With all due respect to the previous speaker, there is a funeral home and a church that holds funeral processions all the time, and I think that the fire station on 9 North Road, 9 North Road, there we go, on North Road adequately handles going into and out of their location without any issues. If anybody would like to correct me if I'm wrong, that would be. I want to say, in the late 1980s, there was a need for a center fire station to be renovated, and it was not done. And over the years, the issue has been brought up over and over and over again, and it has been tabled over and over and over again. Yet other facilities have been maintained and have been renovated and have been put in the forefront. There have been studies that have been done on this issue over and over again. There have been propositions that have been put forth in front of the town that have been voted down more than one occasion. And we are at a position right now where every single precinct except Precinct Three voted for us to move this motion forward and to support it. And had this been a binding vote, this would have held, no matter what the percentage was, the majority was, that we would move this forward as town meeting representatives. I understand that these individuals are not happy about the location, but I have heard time and time again, every location that's been posed is, I don't want that here, by the people that is, are directly related to that. I was pleased to hear at least one resident get up and speak about their not having any issues with the fire department being located so close to their house and not hearing any fire engine sirens coming out and the fact that the firefighters were good neighbors. My concern is if this doesn't go through tonight, we're putting this back on the back burner. Not only is the safety of the people who are coming to our rescue being put in jeopardy, but also we are at risk if this station that we are currently in is no longer deemed usable. What are we going to do then? I don't think anybody's thinking about that that's coming up to speak here, and if they are, I would like to know what they would like to do to kind of support that and to ameliorate that situation when it does come up. I am very concerned about that, and I think that the more we delay it, not only will the costs go up, but the price that we pay may not be just a dollar amount. So I am voting in favor of that, and I ask my town meeting representatives to also do the same. Thank you for your time.
Could I have the next speaker, any against line, please?
Hi, my name is Diane Brown. Sorry, I live on 3 Carter Drive, which is relatively close to Billerica Road. I'm sorry, I'm powerful nervous, so I'm just going to be reading what I wrote earlier. On voting day, I went to my precinct to specifically vote no to the proposed site for the fire statement. Although I agree that there's a desperate need for a new fire station for many reasons, which you'll hear about tonight, I do not feel that the proposed site will be a suitable location for a five-day fire station. I do not feel that out of desperation, we should be trying to squeeze a square peg into a round hole. The ballot question that I found, when I found it, was not the question that I had expected to see. The wording of the question was a bit confusing. It seemed more like two questions. One about the proposed site, to which I would have voted no. One about the funding of the fire station, to which I would have voted yes. It almost sounded as if the site had been chosen and we just needed to figure out how to pay for it. Because of my confusion, I felt I could not vote on this referendum at all. I left the circle blank. From the results that I have seen, 1,377 non-votes, or 22.9% of the total vote, it seems like I'm not the only person who was a bit confused by the wording of the question. I'm sure that there are always some non or blank votes, but according to the records, the last firehouse vote had 33.4% of the total votes as blank or non-votes. That seems reasonable. 22.9, it seems to me that there's more at work this time to that number, be it confusion of the wording or the inability to even find the question on the ballot. I'm here tonight because if you will be basing your votes solely on the results of the town ballot question, those votes may be misleading and may not correctly reflect the views of the Chelmsford voter. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Now can I hear a plus side?
Thomas Fall, Precinct Five. In all due respect to the previous speaker, Mr. Moderator, you can't judge by what somebody did do. I realize there are a lot of people that didn't vote. The ballots were well displayed around town. When you went to the polling places, it was stated that this is a two-sided ballot. And I don't think any reference should be made to the fact there was, you know, so many blanks, because I personally know people that have said to me that they also missed the ballot question and they would have voted for it. So I, in all due respect to the previous speaker, I believe that that should be a non-issue in this situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person against?
My name is Mary Krantz. I live at 11 Carter Drive. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for the opportunity to speak. I am a citizen of Chelmsford. I voted in the annual town election on April 3, 2012. I voted using the ballot provided to the voters for the election. Before I came to the town meeting this evening, I read the Town of Chelmsford Finance Committee Report, recommendations, and copy of the warrant for the spring session of the annual town meeting for Monday, April 30, 2012. I read the report specifically with regard to warrant Article 10. In the table of contents, it includes warrant Article 10 as new fire station headquarters. On page three of the Finance Committee introductory letter for the report, it speaks to major capital projects, which includes Article 10 as new town center fire station headquarters. On page 17 is the spring 2012. There were no items of instruction or directions on the ballot for a question, when in fact there was a question on the ballot for a new center fire station. Period.
Let me say that-
The question on the ballot-
Excuse me. Let me say that that ballot is mandated by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts-
I understand that.
... and was not a Town of Chelmsford ballot.
Okay. The question on the ballot was identified as question one advisory. It was located on the back page at the bottom of the ballot. The actual voter response to question one advisory, according to the town clerk's record, was yes, 2,468. No, 2,162. Ovals which were left unfilled, 1,377. The number of ovals which were left unfilled by 1,377 voters in response to question one advisory is compelling. In addition, and most significant, is that the ballot question advisory did not contain the same description as warrant Article 10, which is in the Town of Chelmsford Finance Committee Report. Warrant Article 10 and its descriptions are in conflict with the description which was on the ballot question one advisory, which stated, shall the Town of Chelmsford pay the debt service for a new center fire station? Period. Question one advisory on the ballot specified a new center fire station. The voters did not vote for a fire station headquarters facility because this description was omitted in question one advisory on the ballot on April 3, 2012. Please consider this fact when you vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person on the affirmative microphone?
My recollection is that we've been looking at a new fire station issue based on our crumbling building for over eight years. There were traffic studies done and simulation and models prepared a long time ago that showed the traffic flow in the center of town in all directions towards south, west, east, and north. And based on the fire station location that we have now, that's one of the reasons why we decided to locate the fire station near the center of town. It would, the fire engines would make it out. So in the hopes that I don't have to be standing here with this same discussion four years from now, I'd like to make a few quick points. All the precincts across town, save Precinct Three, voted in favor of the new fire station issue. It is an issue where we're living within our means. That's one of the reasons why it didn't get located at other places in the town because the cost of that was too high. There was a Proposition Two and a Half debt exemption attached to it, and it was voted down. We have no override. It's a manageable debt structure. You've seen the town manager present the debt structure, and it is manageable based on any reasonable analysis of that. The property is sized for the needs of the fire department. You've heard the chief talk about that. It is designed in keeping with its location next to the town offices. We are reusing town space to lower the cost, continuing to lower the cost and lower the cost so it becomes more affordable. There are no purchase costs for the property. We own it. Any other place that we would locate it, other than town property, would cost us more. We've looked at those. There are collateral improvements around the town hall that come with voting in favor of this location for the fire station. It meets the needs of the fire department for training, for location of administrative offices, for sufficient equipment, for high bays, for modern equipment, so we lower costs when we replace equipment that will not fit in the current fire station. It adds to the public safety of the entire town, which is why I think the town voted in favor of it. They know we need it, and they have said this is the time that we should do it. There will be no widening of the road, and there was no perceptible increase in the traffic on Billerica Road. I drove up Route Four going to work a while ago when I worked at one company, and yes, traffic was backed up every day. Now I drive down 129. So I've seen both roads. There's no difference. If the fire engines can get out of the center station, they can get out of a station that's located next to the town hall. We have very, very good people who have looked into this project. Pat Maloney, who has done other projects in town, has a reputation that I don't think is equal anywhere else for coming in on cost or under cost. So we have a low construction cost because of the times that we're in. Call it a recession, call it what you will, but the construction costs aren't going to get any lower. And we also have low interest rates, so when we go to pay for the debt, we're going to be at the lowest interest rates we have ever seen for decades, decades. And if you think they're going to stay that way forever, they probably are not. So the town has spoken in favor of this location and this project with their vote. So we have a chance tonight to do one of two things. We can move forward with the fire station that we need at a cost we can afford under manageable debt, or we can go back four years and try and figure out what we could possibly do different to lower the cost, to reuse town space, to put it on town property. A debt exemption's not going to work. Proposition Two and a Half is not going to pass. This is the best location right now. This is the best financing plan with the best people that we have involved in the design of the facility. I ask you to vote yes for this fire station tonight because it is time to move forward.
Could we hear the opposing point of view?
Hi, my name is Kathleen Murphy. I'm at 68 Billerica Road. I do believe we do need a fire station, and I am very, very offended that anybody would think that I do not understand the levity of the situation. As people standing here understand how badly we need this. It hasn't been our responsibility to come up with this plan, okay? So I just want you to understand that we feel for the firefighters, we really do. I have a few points to make. One thing I actually have a question about that, oh, not a question, but I have something to say about that rendering. That parking area that is kind of between the parking, I mean, the front of town hall and the fire department where the bays would be coming out, as of right now, that parking lot that's at the top of the hill there, which is supposed to be that whole area, there's about that many spaces going across already, so I don't understand how that could be conceptually accurate. Okay? I also have a question about, I don't feel it was adequately answered, about the, what if we find ledge? I know that it was said that we potentially have the money in there if something happens to be done, if there's ledge. Does that mean that there's blasting done, and is that allowed near historical homes that are within 60 feet? I also wonder how much has been addressed on the actual structural integrity of that hill with the amount of the weight of all those fire, all the equipment, if that's been addressed as to whether or not there would be some kind of sinking of that hill. In all due respect to the talking that the town has voted this in favor, I don't believe that a tenth of the town approving this is really in favor. As people standing here understand how badly we need this. It hasn't been our responsibility to come up with this plan, okay? So I just want you to understand that we feel for the firefighters, we really do. I have a few points to make. One thing I actually have a question about that, oh, not a question, but I have something to say about that rendering. That parking area that is kind of between the parking, I mean, the front of town hall and the fire department where the bays would be coming out, as of right now, that parking lot that's at the top of the hill there, which is supposed to be that whole area, there's about that many spaces going across already, so I don't understand how that could be conceptually accurate. Okay? I also have a question about, I don't feel it was adequately answered, about the, what if we find ledge? I know that it was said that we potentially have the money in there if something happens to be done, if there's ledge. Does that mean that there's blasting done, and is that allowed near historical homes that are within 60 feet? Okay, I also wonder how much has been addressed on the actual structural integrity of that hill with the amount of the weight of all those fire, all the equipment, if that's been addressed as to whether or not there would be some kind of sinking of that hill. In all due respect to the talking that the town has voted this in favor, I don't believe that a tenth of the town approving this is really in favor. And of the ones that actually voted, so we have approximately 6,000 people voted, of the ones that said yes or no, only 53% said yes out of those people that actually voted on this question. 53% is not the 2/3rds vote that we need here tonight. That is not the town speaking that they want this, and not in a 2/3rds majority. That's... Also, I have a question about, oh, not a question, sorry, about the actual article. At the bottom of the article, it states that the Board of Selectmen be authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out this project. I feel that's a very, that doesn't state enough. That's too open.
Could you get to a central point, please?
Yeah, that's my point. Thank you.
Next in favor?
Yes, hi. Good evening. Drew Sklar, Precinct 2. I believe most of these issues that these people have bringing up tonight should be addressed, or will be addressed by the planning board, such as the traffic and lights and all that stuff. And it appears at this time, most everybody, well, if this article does pass tonight, I would urge all them to attend those planning board meetings and the other meetings that take place on this. But it appears at this time that everybody is repeating themselves, and I don't believe there's any more information that can come forward. I'd like to move the question.
You can't move the question after you make a speech. A question, to move the question, that has to be the only words that come out of your mouth.
Peggy Dunn, Precinct 1. I'd like to move the question.
Okay, we have a motion. Motion to move the question.
Mr. Moderator, there were other people in line, in this line, that would be the next person to come to the microphone.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. Motion to move the question is a privileged motion, and that was an open mic, and if you want to hold that off, I will acquiesce to what you said. You can hold that off. Next person against.
Thank you. My name is Mel Shula, and I live at 40 Bill Ricker Road, at Connor Wilson Street, Bill Ricker Road. For me, this is a very emotional subject for everybody involved. And for me, with my 40 years of construction experience and my 25 years of experience with emergency response, it's a business decision. In this business decision, there are too many things that are in question, and everybody is talking about it, what's in question. When you make a business decision, whether it's at home or at work, you make that decision to try to capitalize on the assets that you have and make sure those assets are taken care of. And one of those assets that we have that is cheaper in construction cost is the existing police station. We have a training room, we have locker rooms, we have meeting rooms. That is an excellent facility. And when I was asked that question at a selectmen's meeting or at the open mic, or the meeting that Mr. Cohen had, I was told that is out of the question because of a four-minute response lag. My answer to that is, you can mitigate that four-minute response lag, and that's where I have a problem. The problem is, this is a business decision that we as a town need to bake to make that we're going to crucify a neighborhood. I've lived in my house since 1976, and I plan on dying in my house. I do not want to see the neighborhood go through any more drastic changes. Is a place for it, you can mitigate the response time and still take care of the needs of the town. And that's the problem I have. It's a business decision. Thank you.
Now to the pro side.
Mr. Moderator, Peggy Dunn, Precinct 1. I'd like to move the question.
Have a motion to move the question. It requires a 2/3rds vote to move the question. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed. Could we have the tellers come forward? We're going to have to count this one. We have to count this. This is an active motion.
This is Kelly Lee from Chelsor Telemedia. I've been kind of quiet here tonight, but this opportunity to speak as the tellers are coming forward, it's certainly everything that was advertised. We have a very important decision here for the town-
You have your areas sectioned off?
The, obviously, a very emotional one for the people in the area of Bill Ricker Road that will be affected by having a police station in their neighborhood.
You have four tellers. Be sure you don't double count.
For those of you who are still up in wait-
All those in favor of moving the question, raise your tickets and keep them up there until you're told to put them down.
This is a vote to move the question.
The question is to move the question.
And so this vote requires a 2/3rds majority in order to move the question, that is, to end debate and go to the actual vote on Article 10.
Yep, yep, I am, I am.
I think there's an interesting contrast to be made here that when I first started covering town meetings many years ago, the budget itself would take hours and hours of protracted debate, a lot of inspection of small-scale items, and yet this evening we passed a $107 million budget for the coming year with an increase of 2.4% over the previous year in really just a matter of about 20 minutes, half hour at most. But we knew that this was going to be coming, and it is-
Okay, all those in favor of moving the question-
It's important to point out, and I think some of the speakers have done that, that the ballot was-
Raise your hand and keep them up there.
From April, which was a non-binding resolution on this proposal, it was difficult to find the question on the back of the ballot. And the fact that about 20% of the voters left it blank would be, as one speaker put, a compelling point that the question was hard to find and may have, had everyone found it, perhaps the vote would have been different. That said, these town meeting representatives are the ones who have been elected by their, by their fellow citizens to make the decisions on their behalf. The vote, which we haven't gotten to yet, will require a 2/3rds majority, and that is a fairly steep hurdle to overcome. There aren't many ballot, there aren't many questions here at town meeting that require that 2/3rds majority, but this is certainly one of them. And it is a significant amount of money. It's $7.8 million.
Okay, now, all those that are against moving the question and continuing debate, raise your tickets.
$7.8 million, which would be paid for within the budget process without actually needing an override. As has been pointed out, there have been several vote attempts in the past to try to get a new fire station approved at various different locations. One of the things that has driven decisions like these in the past is, when you go back to the drawing board, having had it defeated, you tend to find ways to make it smaller, leaner, more affordable. And this version is less expensive, I think Pat Maloney said, by 28, oh, the square footage required is 28% less than the original proposals came forward.
Tellers, bring the results to the town clerk.
It's unusual for a town meeting to go on this long. Those of you watching live, it's 10 minutes of midnight. Those of you who are watching it in replay are obviously able to see it at a more convenient And so, we're awaiting, it's, there's almost a pressure relief right now as we try to find out what the result of this vote is, but there's a certain amount of discussion going on here in the hallway, in the senior center. People are, I think, are anxious to see this come to a conclusion. That said, there are a half dozen people left in line to speak against the proposal, and we'll see if they have an opportunity to do so. I'm going to turn it back over to the, to the general ambiance here in the senior center and see what develops of this vote. I should mention that the, we're nowhere near the end of this warrant for the annual town meeting. This is Article 10 of a 33 article warrant. Now, a few of those articles will not be addressed. They've been withdrawn or will otherwise have no action taken. And I will say that the, that the discussion-
Okay, the vote is yes, 81; no, 74. The motion to move the question fails.
So debate will continue.
Yes, I'm Susan Johola from 37 First Street, Precinct 1, and I also own property on Perrym Street, 2123. And I'd like to say I felt this plan was really forced into us very quickly. I know we need a station. I know the plans before have failed. I voted for Wilson Street. I thought it was a great idea. It would have been perfect. I don't know why it failed. I would have carried a sign if I thought the town wasn't for it, except that it was very pricey. They could have come down on the price, it would have made it. I want to know things about this. I don't mind the station going up there. I know we need a station. However, putting pilings and having a wall that will look like Lowe's up in Nashua to hold up that retaining wall is questionable. And how many parking spaces do we have up there? I was there today, and there were very few empty spaces. What's going to happen? I love my town hall. I go to the town hall. Really, there was no specifics. How many spaces are there now, and how many are they planning on making out back? And what about the side roads? Is that going to remain one-way? Or can people, are they going to try to make it two-way so people can cut up and go down that way? I just think they're just shoving it on us right now. Everybody's tired here tonight. It's very late. We need to delay this. You can't make a decision short because it'll end up for 50 years of something maybe we don't want for this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone want to speak in favor?
My name is Rachel Bessinon, and I live at 55 Bill Ricker Road, across from the proposed fire station headquarters. First off, I just want to say thank you for listening to our neighborhood concerns because that's what we are. We're a neighborhood. And I would just like to also take this opportunity to remind you of other times neighborhoods have come together to be heard. Think about that project for the new water tower and the monopole. The neighborhood came together. The town officials listened. The neighborhood was protected. Think about the yellow lines on High Street. The neighborhood organized. Town officials listened, and that neighborhood was protected. Think about whenever a 40B housing project gets proposed. Those affected neighborhoods organize, town officials listen, and those neighborhoods are protected. Our neighborhood has organized to ask you for help. We are asking you to protect our neighborhood and to do the right thing. For those of you who are on the fence, don't forget that a no vote is an affirmation of our town, our community's commitment to protecting neighborhoods. And that's what our neighborhood is here to ask you to do. We ask you to vote no on this issue and to protect our neighborhood. Thank you.
Have somebody speak in in favor?
With all due respect to the residents of this neighborhood, I'm getting mixed messages.
Name and-
Oh, sorry, Karen, UTAC, Precinct 5. We hear it's a residential neighborhood. Every single person who bought a house in that neighborhood bought it across from a town building. That building has been there before every single person, that I could find, nobody has lived there before that building was a town building. It's been there a long time. Secondly, it's a residential neighborhood, but yet it's a state route. It has bumper-to-bumper traffic. This is not what I think a residential neighborhood is. I went by this street the other day, the Little League Field, the lights blare onto 129. Those lights will be nothing in comparison with the Little League lights. What I want to say is, when traffic lights go in, like the traffic lights at Golden Cove, do you think that the people on that intersection wanted those lights? Of course they didn't. Nobody wants a light right in front of your house. It was a safety issue, and we put it in because it was safer. This is a safety issue, and four minutes is not a business decision. It is someone's life. Thank you.
Next. Mike Murphy, Precinct 1. I was going to be brief, but I do have to debate that last point. I'm sorry if my definition of neighborhood is different than yours. This is my neighborhood, and that's what it is. From a perspective of a neighbor, I will not speak about how it's affecting the neighborhood. I will speak about my concerns for the fire department. I'm glad this picture's still up here because this is a much narrower road than Route 4. The distance between a green light and the fire station is approximately a half mile either way. During rush hour, that's 30 or 40 cars. That green light going green is not going to get a large fire truck down that road. It's going to cause confusion. 30 cars are not going to go through a green light when a fire truck is behind them. I will also say, there's a lot of responses on Route 3. The fire trucks don't go down 129 now. They go 110 because 129 is hard to get through. Wilson Street was the preferred route because that's where the fire trucks run. During rush hour, this is going to be a tough route, and they are not going to be able to turn right on 110. That's a tight turn. With cars pulled over, it's not going to move there. I hate to talk about thoughts and conjecture, but that's what we keep getting feedback on. But I can tell you from living on that road, that is gridlocked from the center to the Golden Cove Road lights, and those trucks will have difficulty getting by. Thank you.
Next on the pro side.
Now that we've heard from the residents that were-
Name and-
Oh, sorry, Trisha Duras, Precinct 1. Now that we've heard from the residents that were cued, I'd like to move the question.
Get another motion to move the question. Again, takes 2/3rds. All those in favor, please raise your tickets. All those opposed, raise your tickets. Moderator judges that we have the 2/3rds.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to request a roll call on this vote.
You need 40 reps. You need 40 reps. Mr., the rep from Precinct 1, previous speaker, has requested a roll call. I need to see 40 tickets to have a roll call. All those in favor, raise your hand. I do not see 40 tickets.
If we had these working, it would work better.
I do not see 40. I'm sorry. Motion fails. If you want to count it, get seven, and we'll count it. Okay, we'll count it. All those that want a roll call- All those that want a roll call-
Roll call for what, please?
Roll call, he asked for a roll call on this vote. I need to see at least 40 tickets. And we'll have the tellers count them.
This is Kelly Beatty for Chelmsford Telemedia. I think that win, lose, or draw-
Mr. Moderator, I'm confused. When I asked for a count, you only needed seven people to stand up.
You asked for a roll call.
No, but then when you, when you made your, your, your ruling, I said, "I question the vote." Seven people can question the vote, and you can assign the tellers to do the counting.
I did. You're doing, you're doing it now.
Yeah, but you said, "We have to do 40."
Because you asked for a roll call, my friend.
Mister, Mister Moderator? Point of information?
Yes.
We'd like clarification on what it is exactly we are voting for?
You are putting, if you want a roll call, raise your ticket.
A roll call for which, for which-
For this vote.
For, for the vote on the-
For the vote on Article 10.
On Article 10, thank you, sir.
It's a roll call for moving the question.
I'm sorry. It's a roll call for moving the question. If you want a roll call for moving the question, raise your ticket. Tellers, count that. You probably only need one. You don't have to count nos, just count this one.
So I've been covering town meeting a long time, and I've seen a fair number of roll call votes, but I've never, ever seen a roll call vote on moving the question. And moving the question means that we're gonna end debate and actually vote on the article. That, moving the question requires a two-thirds vote. The article itself will require a two-thirds vote. I don't believe there are 40 tickets in the air here.
Tellers on the floor, could you please tell me what your count was?
And the tellers are going to come forward. I'm not sure what Mr. Joyce's point was to request a roll call vote, as opposed to just have the tellers count a vote. Roll call vote is very time-consuming, require every, every rep here to stand and vote yea or nay. Perhaps it's, his idea is to show who is for the neighborhood and who is against, because there still were a few people wanting to speak against this article.
Okay, that doesn't pass, you only got 36. That means that the question has been moved, because I ruled that there was a two-thirds majority. So now, we are going to vote the question.
Remind them what they're voting on.
Okay. This is what you're voting for.
Mr. Moderator, point of order? A point of information?
Yes.
At what point can we make the motion to have a roll call on this vote?
When it's finished. This vote, the article seeks $7.8 million for the design and construction of a new town center fire station. This takes a two-thirds majority, majority to pass. All those in favor, please raise your tickets. All those opposed? The article passes.
Mr. Moderator? I'd like to ask for a roll call vote, so that the residents in town will know how these people voted.
We need, again, 40 people for a roll call vote. All those in favor of a roll call vote, raise your tickets. I would like one teller to count all the votes.
This time, there might be 40 hands in the air, in which case, we would have a roll count vote. And what that would mean is that the record would show which reps voted in favor of this article for the new fire station, and which would, how many would, who exactly would be voting against it. You might wonder why there is so much confusion on the floor. One of the things that may not be obvious to you, we last town meeting had a, introduced a new automatic teller voting system, which worked very well, but it is not working tonight. And this process would've gone a lot quicker had that been functional. Haven't exactly gotten an understanding of why it isn't functional, but all of the votes tonight-
I would ask that you do not leave, this is the most important vote we have taken this evening.
So consequently, all of the votes we've taken have been sort of the old-fashioned way. You hold up a ticket in your hand. There is obviously a lot of, there are a lot of people here who are not town meeting reps. This has obviously brought a lot of people out to town meeting. I'm sure a lot of you, maybe more of you than usual, have been watching these proceedings. This is a fairly important decision in the, the history of the town. About a month ago, the, the town had a open house at the center fire station, so the residents could come down and take a look at the situation there and the condition of it. Obviously, they were trying, the town officials were trying to get a sympathetic viewing of the situation. The, the station is in very poor shape. It is, it would need an awful lot of work. One of the things that struck me about it was that the, the bays there are not high enough to take standard-
Okay, we have enough votes for a roll call.
And so those fire equipment-
I will read the name, and I-
Custom. Let's get back to Dick DeFritis.
I ask everybody to be quiet, we've gotta get through this fairly quickly. I will read your name, and you will tell, tell us how you were voting. Yes or no? You don't have to come up to the microphone, just yell it out.
Quick, quick word, Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Please read the question that we are voting yes or no to, to make sure it's not a motion to move.
The motion, this is for a roll call on Article 10. That's for the $7.8 million to fund and design the construction of a new town center fire station. This is what you're voting on, okay? Precinct 1. Barry, Robert H. Precinct 2. Bruff, Catherine. Precinct 3. Chase, Samuel. I'm sorry, Precinct 1, it's all Precinct 1. Precinct 1. Chase, Samuel. Precinct 1. Curia, Marion. Precinct 1. Dunn, Peggy. Precinct 1. Zouris, Tricia. Precinct 1. Hickey, Ralph. Precinct 1. Joyce, Robert. Precinct 1. Kaplan, Cynthia. Precinct 1. Kowalski, Karen. Precinct 1. Carolyn, John. Precinct 1. McDougall, Francis. Precinct 1. McWigan, Ann. Precinct 1. McWigan, Laura. Precinct 1. Steven, Mitchell, Steven. Precinct 1. Pinder, James. Precinct 1. Raizeback, Michael. Precinct 1. Tabritti, Kathleen. Precinct 2. I won't re-mention the precinct, takes too long. This is Precinct 2. Bush, Stephanie. Clark, Bruce. Davies, Pamela. Dubinsky, David. Gillette, Bernadette. Irvine, David. Carafellus, Maria. Lee, Laura. Merrill, George. Merrill, Laura. Maury, David. Murphy, Ja, Janet. Spence, Janice. Cassie, Kenneth. Thompson, John. Thorpe, Dazorit, Karen. Whiting, Jean. Wojzus, Charles. Now we go to Precinct 3. Abbott, John. Armstrong, Pamela. Day, Richard. Dixon, George. Flynn, Steven. Hadley, David. Clank, Peter. Clank, Peter. Knight, Nancy. McPhee, Brian. Mahoney, Richard. Matzkin, Harold. McCall, Michael. Miller, Jeffrey. Monahan, Ruth. Reddy, Joseph. Russo, Richard. Twombly, Elizabeth. Zaharulis, George. We go to Precinct 4. Como, James. Como, James. Como, Mary Jane. Cool, Henry. Jones, Linda. Latina, Brian. Legrand, Raymond. Or Ramondi, or what is it? Ramond. Maffetone, or Mafftone, Steven. Manahan, Helen. Marshall, Kirk. Martin, Billy. Martin, Ke, Kevin. Pichet, Sheila. Plunkett, Brenda. Plunkett, John TIV IV. Ripson, Elizabeth. Ripson, George. Sheen, Dennis. Sullivan, Daniel. That takes care of Precinct 4. Precinct 5. Barrett, Beverly. Carter, Susan. Consalvo, Elaine. Silvio, Nicholas. Eleopolis, Philip. Irksen. Edwin, Paul. Fall, Thomas. Hanson, Matthew. Kelly, Seleski, Karen. Carol, rather. Morenci, Mark. Perkins, Cheryl. Rose, Christopher. Seleski, Edward. Seleski, Edward. Thomas, W. Allen, Allen. Thomas, W. Allen, Jr. Thorne, Ellen, Evelyn. Thorne, Glenn. UTEC, Karen. Wojzus, Patricia. That's Precinct 5. Abbott, Joshua. Anderson, Joanne. Solento, or Killento, Matthew. Matthew Solento, with a C. Did he say no? Coombs, Michael. Conley, Deidra. Gary, Deborah. Dubner, Janet. Early, Roy. Franz, Mary. Hardy, Jeffrey. Lera, Neil. McGlaklin, David. Pareski, Mary Ann. Rigney, Michael. Skelly, Kenneth. Stansfield, Colleen. Stansfield, Eric. Van Lu, Roland. I don't know? Okay. Precinct 7. Dolat, Mark. Duland, Leonard. Duffitt. Catherine. Ducakis, Stratus. Gleason, Paul. Haverty, Paul. Jackson, Regina. Janot, Claire. Kruglak, or Kruglak, Gail. Yeah, you have to speak up. Lane, James. Lowell, Linda. Lucente, Jeffrey. Lynch, Caroline. O'Neil, Jody. Polly, Donna. Polly, Henry. Polly, Henry. Been home. Porter, Kevin. Sir Lynch, Andrew. Are you abstaining? You don't have to recor, it, it doesn't count in a two-thirds vote. Precinct 8. Clevin, Carol. Clevin, Walter. And really, you sleeping tonight?
I was just gonna say, somebody's on the couch tonight. Good job.
Karen, Michael. Karen, Michael. DiDonato, Karen. Yarahan, Christopher. Gervais, Alexander. Gervais, Alexander. Hulslander, Ralph. Magnel, Patricia. Mandel, Bruce. Moran, Thomas. Olencak, Leonard. Nolan, William. Colton, Samuel. Reddy, Dennis. Russo, Robert S. Spiller, James. Torrento, Angelo. Tiano, Mary. Okay, we're down to the short strokes here in Precinct Nine. Apostolakis, Jeff. Barry, Francis. Cristiano, Carmen. Dandara, Susan. Dolat, Ann. Dolat, Victor. Is that a no? Donahue, Nancy. Evans, Danielle. Gore, Rebecca. Graves, Susan. Griffin, William. Hickey, James. Halos, George. What was that? Low, Jerry. McNamara, Matthew. Siaka, Leanne. Smith, John. Young, James.
How many votes for two-thirds?
Okay, I've been asked for you to put your clickers in the basket even though we did not get a chance to use them. And what is that word? What are those things?
I want to move to adjourn.
You can't move till we get the results.
I can't put my clicker away then either.
Can't move till we get the results.
Can't put my clicker away till we're through voting. I saw you, I saw you chicken out. I see Karen for the other night. I haven't seen her in a while. These two are in trouble when they get home tonight. It, it, I want to say it probably failed by ten votes.
We're waiting for Moderator Dick DeFridis to announce the tally. Our unofficial tally is that a two-thirds majority has been reached, so that, that will approve the article to build the new fire station and I'm sure that a motion to adjourn will very quickly follow, so stand by it.
You know what I mean?
And here we go.
Okay, here are the results. You needed 101 votes for it to pass and the yes votes are 110 and the no votes are 41. The article passes. Now I will entertain-
I will move to adjourn. Dennis Reddy, Precinct Eight.
To adjourn, adjourn or at time certain?
To adjourn till Thursday night.
Motion to adjourn till Thursday night. All in favor?
And that brings this evening's session for the annual town meeting to a close. It has been something of a marathon. We've been here for five hours, which is quite a long time for a town meeting, to be sure, but a very important one. Tonight, the town meeting representatives by approximately a 70% affirmative vote, voted in favor of funding a new fire station where the, adjacent to the existing town hall. And it remains to be seen how that will eventually shape up because the detailed design has not been done yet. We heard a lot of concerns this evening from residents in that area who are not particularly welcoming it in their particular neighborhood along Bill Ricker Road there. Now, town meeting is not over yet. We still have about another 15 or so warrant articles to go through. Those will be taken up on Thursday night. I guarantee you that it won't take five hours. And so we will see you then. Thank you all for joining us this evening on Chelmsford Telemedia. We'll see you on Thursday night. I'm Kelly Beatty. Thank you all for joining us. Have a good night.